I'd like to say good evening to everyone and welcome to the Culpeper County Planning Commission July meeting. We welcome you here and I called the meeting to order. At this time, we will now have the first order business is approval of our agenda at hand. Any additions or deletions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that case U-2246-24-1 be moved on the agenda to right after the approval of the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. We will make that change. The next order business is approval of the minutes of our June 11th and June 12th meetings. We receive those in board docs in all. Do the chair entertain a motion?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, the minutes will be adopted as written, okay? Next, we have the first order business, which will be the first case that we have, the new business that we have moved. Mr. Drumheller? Mr. Drumheller?
I have case U-2246-24-1, a request by Robert Wise, Capital Sheds, for a conditional use permit to allow the construction and operation of a shed sales facility, including outdoor, storage, and display, per Article 7, Light Industrial, Industrial Park District, Section 7, 1A, -2, -3.5 of the zoning ordinance, and also in accordance with Article 17, use permits of the zoning ordinance. The property is indeed zoned LI and is located at the corner of James Monroe Highway, Route 29, and White Shop Road, Route 603, in the Salem Magisterial District. It's found on tax map 48, parcel 90.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As Neil read there, we're looking at a use permit, a conditional use permit, for Mr. Wise, and specifically for Capital Sheds. At this particular location, it's a 10-acre piece at the corner of 603 White Shop Road and Route 29, south of town, south and west of town. The screens in front of you highlight that parcel in red, just to kind of give you an area of flavor if you're not familiar with that particular area in the county. They have a little bit of rural, what I would call, low-density residential in the area. The purple that you do see up 603 White Shop Road is some other types of industrial uses that we've had for a number of years. The reddish-pinkish color there on the other corner is zoned commercial, but that is not realized as of yet. You do have a house there, it's a dwelling there. This kind of highlights the parcel and the existing, kind of the existing condition that it sits today. And one thing I just wanted to point out that I'll discuss a little bit later is that intersection here, and this is the intersection with median at Route 29 and then 603 this way. The applicant's entrance won't be changing. They're planning to use the existing entrance. It's a commercial entrance that's been established for a while now on this property here, and it is a joint, or at least initially proposes a joint potential entrance for the property here to the east. This is the applicant's concept plan, or at least a portion of the concept plan, and just as yesterday, I believe it was, we did forward a revised general development plan, GDP, concept plan, that did address some of staff's initial issues, concerns that were brought forth in the staff report that you all received a couple of weeks ago. And I'm going to go through those, but the applicant probably will as well, and they have a presentation too, Mr. Chairman, that they'll want to go through when I, after I present here. Just like any use permit, we did send it to VDOT for comments, the Soil and Water Conservation District for comments as well. We did post those comments in board docs for your package and for your consideration. VDOT did ask for some trip generation counts, which the applicant has now provided on the latest concept plan, but overall, VDOT did not generate any major concerns, at least not with a use permit. Soil and Water Conservation District did pass along some comments regarding our watershed management district. Believe it or not, this property is a good little ways from Lake Culpepper, but it is still within the watershed management districts, right on the edge of it. This property does drain that general direction. One of the concerns was impervious surface area with the original layout with the concept plan. The applicant went back and just didn't really change anything, but then, but did a better calculation to show what true impervious area we would have. And that concept plan, I believe, illustrates that they're well with under the 25% threshold and somewhere around 18%, if I'm not mistaken, based on what they proposed today. Comprehensive plan is one piece of the pie when you're looking at Article 17 use permit. And as Neil read into the record, there's three different, really three different code sections to look at tonight. One is Article 30, which is your entrance corridor overlay, and that's because it sits right on Route 29. That's one of our identified entrance corridor. So specifically, we want to look at how it meshes with the corridor as far as an architectural standpoint. In the zoning district itself, this use does require, is allowed, is allowed in light industrial zoning, but does require that conditional use permit, which then refers you to Article 17. And as you all know, there's really three basic criteria, one of them being the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan does show this area as it's currently zoned. One thing that I did want to point out with the comprehensive plan is it does reference the environmental services section, or, excuse me, environmental resource section, does talk about the watershed management district, and something that we need to continue to respect with this application, as well as the transportation system. And, Mr. Chairman, I didn't go through the staff report and point out any specifics regarding the intersection, but staff did identify and felt it was our duty to share that this is an intersection that the county continues to receive concerns with from a transportation standpoint, so much where the board is. As we've tried to work with VDOT on a couple of different times, we applied for, or have attempted to apply for smart scale funding, but unfortunately, the solution for that intersection at that time was to delete this intersection and actually require an R cut for the road. The Board of Supervisors did not choose that path at that point, so we're continuing to explore other options to hopefully make that intersection safer. While the applicant doesn't use that portion of 29 at all, they will, obviously, their customers, and they themselves will at least touch that intersection. One thing of note, you know, the light industrial zoning, as it sits today on the property, could yield different uses than what's being proposed tonight. It could be a use that would potentially yield more traffic than what Capital Sheds would probably bring in. It is a retail function or side to this, so we are concerned, you know, about future customers as well as Capital Sheds is. One of the other things that this concept plan points out, that we had an initial staff concern, was that the applicant showed some display areas pretty close to the road. They have pushed those back with this latest rendition of the concept plan, 40 feet, which is your setback off of 603, and then 50 feet along Route 29. And on this particular illustration, they show the landscaping as well back to that line. And I do think that is a good thing for this application, considering the sensitive nature of that intersection. Mr. Chairman, I think I hit all the points that I wanted to share initially, and the applicant does have a presentation, and of course, they can answer any questions that you all may have. We have, did, you know, if I can get it out. We did notify adjacent owners, as well as, of course, advertising the paper. We have heard from a couple of neighbors. I just wanted the Planning Commission to know about that. Some may be here to speak tonight, but just wanted to let you all know that that was done, and we have heard some that have some concerns, some that did not, but some that have some concerns.
Thank you, Sam. Yes, Ms. Dorian?
I have a staff question. What is the proposed lighting and why is there no landscaping next to the R zoning if the neighbors are there?
Yeah, so a couple of things. So Article 32, our lighting ordinance will come into play with the site plan, if this were to mature to that point and get approved. And it would have the full cutoff fixtures, any lighting. They would have to do a, because an outdoor display is the proposed use, they would have to do a photometric plan with that site plan, which would show that basically there's no light bleed onto any adjacent properties. And to answer your second question, Commissioner Thornhill, you're right, the adjacent zoning all around here is zoned residential, so given the fact that it is a light industrial need, there may need to be additional screening at the site plan stage along specifically this boundary here that I'm highlighting now on the screen.
Well, the reason I bring up the lighting is when you come down 29 and you have all that site distance along the front of that, if they have a bunch of lighting, it can be blinding.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Yes.
Just another one for staff, if you don't mind. Sam, you mentioned that they're now below the 25% allowable limit for impervious surface, but the earlier staff comments had addressed the limit of 50% lot coverage in a light industrial zone. Is it staff's assessment now that they're below the 50% lot coverage, because the earlier comment was they were above that?
That's correct, and that was an assumption based on what the first concept plan that was submitted. It just wasn't pointed out on the concept plan, but the applicant did retool that, and they pointed out both issues. They talked about the light industrial straight 50% lot coverage. They're well with under that with this plan, as well as the impervious surface for the watershed management.
Yes.
Yeah, Sam, you talked about the shared entrance with an adjacent parcel. Do we know any more about arrangements on that?
No, not other, Commissioners Eggly, than it is an existing shared entrance today that has an easement on it, that this property here to the east and north can enjoy as well. I don't know that there's any active development plans for that property right now, though. The applicant may know more, I don't know.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Is the applicant or someone representing the applicant come forth and give your full name for the record, please?
Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, Ryan Farugie with Bagby Farugie in Good Pasture, engineer of record. The applicant, Robert Wise, is here in the blue, so if I can't answer anything, or if you have any specific questions, you know, regarding the actual use of the property, he'd be able to jump in and help with that. Sam, Neil, okay, great. Okay, great. Neil, Sam, thank you for the presentation. Unfortunately, we'll have a little bit of repeat slides here. I'll try to get through them quickly, and then if you guys have any, if the commission has any questions, I'll feel free to, feel free to answer them. So, again, Capital Sheds. So, this is pretty much the same thing that we had seen before, case number Robert Wise, conditional use. So we have two use permits, conditional use for the outdoor storage within light industry, light industry, and then special use permit within the overlay corridor. So we have two, and so this is a little, this is an exhibit here or picture. It's actually a little video. Can you hit play on that, or do I need to hit? Okay, good. So it'll go. This is a little bit of a video of what Capital Sheds is and the type of products that will be displayed on this site. There are a few other things to note here, how the sheds are delivered, how they're put on site. Notice here that there's no impervious area underneath of these, there's not, this is not going to be stripped and grubbed. All the tops will remain in place. These things sit on grass, that's how people will come and see them. And so, you know, they're, we will talk a little bit about the imperviousness and some of that calculation, but again, this is not stripped and grubbed, they're not sitting on gravel, you know, they just sit on grass as you, as you had kind of seen in that. Replay the video again, or did everybody kind of get the idea? Okay. Again, aerial map, you guys had already seen this previously, and the zoning map as well. Generalized Development Plan. So I'd like to expand a little bit on this about some of the questions about the impervious calculation and lot coverage. So in the upper right-hand corner, when we originally submitted this as a concept, what you're seeing on the screen there are 25 by 25 square foot boxes. So those are areas, people come and visit the sheds, they need to be able to walk around, they need to be able to see them, open doors and things like that. So in the original concept, we had just shown a 25 by 25 box, and when we showed a 25 by 25 box, that doesn't necessarily represent the shed that is there. As you saw, the sheds that are there are much smaller than 25 by 25. So typical shed ranges somewhere between 10, 10 by 16, 12 by 16, you know, 12 by 14, something, you know, something along that nature. So each one of those pads only has about 150 to 200 square feet of impervious area, even though the boxes look larger, but that, again, that's for circulation around, you know, around the individual sheds or products that are there so people can see them. So as you see here, I think there's approximately 300 boxes, if you will, and so that represents approximately about 100,000 square feet of impervious area on the site, including the asphalt drive, parking spaces, and the building. So with all that, calculate all the math, it is about only 18% impervious area that would be on the entire site. And then understand, too, these products are constantly being sold and moved, and so just what you see here doesn't necessarily mean that that's what will be here. There may only be a fraction of this, you know, 20% of these are on the site because he sold them, or they're coming in, or they're getting shipped. These are Amish-built sheds, so they get brought in on trucks. So, you know, the inventory moves, well, at least that's the hope, you know, that the inventory, that the inventory moves. So again, we were just kind of showing a, you know, I say a worst-case scenario. Couple other things that were brought up about the shared entrance. We can do a little more research on this, but that is a shared entrance that is there. We will, if you, if you drive out there, now it's just a gravel, it's just a gravel entrance that is there. Based on the number of trips, there's not exactly a real well-defined use in the trip generation manual for this, but we're probably around 50 or 60 trips is where we think a day. That peak is probably around eight or nine. I think that's illustrated on the cover sheet of this generalized development plan, which I think is in your packet. Based on around 50 trips, we would be qualifying for a low-volume commercial entrance, so we would be paving it, we would be offsetting it a little bit, and, you know, kind of putting a little bit tapers, a little bit of flares, and we put in a little bit of curb and gutter just at the entrance in the throat. It's paved. This is standard VDOT requirements that will be addressed at site plan. And then also, with that, we have to meet site distance. So it's a low-volume commercial entrance, so we would probably have, not probably, we would be meeting stopping site distance as opposed to intersection site distance. So these are just some of the details, but, you know, we can look and see, but that is a shared entrance. It is there, and we intend to, you know, not add another one, which is in conformance with what VDOT standards are, to minimize the number of access points along their, along their right-of-way. Also, we'll not be proposing any entrances along 29. So again, just from a traffic standpoint, that's what we will be. This is, this would be the way the concept or the plan would be submitted at site plan. Just go through here, make sure I don't have any other notes. So this is a little bit of a rundown of some of the bulk regulations for light industrial or light industry. So, Mr. Price, you had asked about lot coverage. We have a 50% max lot coverage. We're at 18. Open space, we're required to have a minimum of 20. We have 82, you know, give or take, but, you know, we're well, we're well above the standards that it requires. Setbacks, Sam and Neil had indicated that they wanted all of the, they wanted all of the sheds, if I go back a slide, oh, maybe it won't let me, but go back a slide, we would, we put all the sheds outside of the 50-foot setback and then showed the landscaping that would be there, and that landscaping will all be designed and in conformance with site plan standards, assuming this is approved in the site plan, and the site plan is submitted. All right, here we go. So this is for the entrance corridor overlay. So a couple of little different bulk regulations, I mean, the bulk regulations are the same as light industry, which you see there in the final bullet, but a couple of other standards that are outlined in this overlay district is the screening. So if you recall from the aerial, there's some tree line along White Shop Road, there's some tree line along 29, and a lot of those are filled with scrub trees. It's really, I mean, a lot of it's dead, a lot of it's unhealthy. I've actually walked the site, there's all kinds of ivy grown up everywhere. So it would be, and we talked about this with Sam and Neil, that, you know, the intent would be that they would, anything that's unhealthy or anything that's shrub, that would be removed, and it would be replaced with something that is ornamental and significantly better than what is currently, than what is currently there. There is also an existing billboard that is on this, that is on this site. It's the applicant's intent to keep that billboard, and he will be replacing the messaging, which I think is allowed in the sign article. And so they will just be, he'll just be replacing the message on the sign.
Does the applicant own that billboard, or the advertising company owns it?
Do you know that?
I honestly don't know. I don't want to give you the wrong answer.
You know, we might have Mr. Wise, if you come and sit closer in case we need you, because we need you to speak into that microphone, or the gentleman in that little booth back there is going to give me a hard time.
Sorry, I honestly don't know.
Go ahead and give your full name.
Sorry, I honestly don't know if...
State your name and who you are.
Oh, Robert Wise, Capital Sheds, sorry. First time ever doing this, bear with me. Yeah, I honestly don't know if the current landowner owns that sign, or if that's owned by a sign company. Obviously, if it's owned by a sign company, that may change our intent, but, or change what we do.
Right, usually the sign company, Lamar, I think is what's on that one, I'm not sure. They rent it out and pay the landowner a monthly fee, so I'm just saying, if you're going to change what's on there, you have to find out if you own it and are able to.
Of course. So I guess basically what he said, but conditioned on if I would actually own the sign or not, so, you know.
So if you don't own the sign, what's the plan?
Well, I guess I would either have to work it out with them, to let them leave it on there and pay me rent if that's the case, or have them remove it. So I haven't really thought that far.
Okay, so you wouldn't try and do any, like, leave that and do an additional signage?
Well, I need a business sign, I know that, I would have to have some sort of business sign, so I'd prefer to keep that one on there and just reface that one, so to speak. Like you said, put my message on there, or my company name on there. But if that's not an option, then I would have to put a different sign.
And just also for the record, if that sign's not able to be reused, not be re-messaged, he would have to comply with all the signage standards, you know, one, you know, so just, that would be, and that'd be done, addressed at site plan and shown on the, shown on the site plan as well.
Reason we ask is because it's at the entrance corridor and it's huge.
It is a lot.
And I don't know that it would get, you know, our sign ordinance by that size that's there, and it's ugly. So I'm just trying to point out to you, if you think you can use it, you better find out. Good, all right.
And you're correct, it would not meet the current ordinance today, so. Think one of the la... Okay, I think one of the last kind of boring slides here with the overlay district. Again, the overlay district has an impervious cover, which is the same thing kind of as lot coverage, but they do it just the way that, the way that it's stated, non-residential is 25% max, again, we're at 18. The watershed management district also talks about, you know, typical stormwater management facilities or measures, so water quality and water quantity. Site plan will come in, it's going to have to meet, it'll be reviewed by DEQ, it'll have to meet water quantity, water quality standards for energy balance, and, you know, either purchase nutrient credits or provide nutrient credits on site. I mean, it, it'll just have to, it'll just have to meet the standard when the site plan comes in for water quantity and water quality. Agency review, I'll just kind of summarize these real fast. VDOT, they had maybe like six or seven comments, if I'm not mistaken, and, yeah, six. Trip generation was provided, again, we're going to be around 50 or 60. The rest of the elements appear to be minor in, minor in scope and would be handled at the site plan. Again, we talked about site distance, geometry of the entrance, and they want some details on the right-of-way reservation, provide a grading plan, and apply for an entrance permit. So that's the, that's the VDOT part, again, pretty straightforward. Culpepper Soil and Water District, again, was addressed. Main comments were about impervious area, which we've discussed ad nauseam, and that we have to meet erosion and stormwater standards, that's more or less. And they did make a comment about the display being within the 50-foot setback, so again, the applicant, we moved all those back out, so. Soil and Conservation. Culpepper County, Sam and Neil's comments, you know, you've seen their case analysis. They had a few comments at the end of their, at the end of their report, and again, I think these were addressed, and so let me just run through these. Watershed management, less than 25%. Lot coverage, less than 50%. We've talked about placement of the sheds, less than 50 feet. And staff recommends preserving as much of the existing vegetation that they can, and he will preserve as much of it as he can, but if you drive through there, there's quite a bit that's dead and vines and unhealthy, unhealthy stuff, and those will be removed and replanted. I think. Staff conclusions, I did speak with Sam, or sent Sam an email, and...
If I'm wrong, you can tell me.
It's okay. But I think he had indicated that, you know, we had addressed the comments that were brought forth at this time for this stage, and some of the other more detailed things would be handled at site plan, assuming a successful, a successful vote. And other than that, I think there was a couple of, well, first of all, I was going to answer a couple of the questions that were brought up, or at least start the discussion, but are there any questions for me or the applicant?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Mr. Kilby.
Yes, sir. Sorry. A couple of things. One item you mentioned was about, you had about 300 buildings, and it was greater than 100,000 square feet, I believe?
I believe that is correct. That's total asphalt, parking, that's all impervious area.
Yeah, only as I say it, because the lot coverage only has 78,000. I just wanted to clarify that.
Well, that could be true, so the, if you, if I, let me pull that tabulation out. So yes, on the lot coverage ratio, okay, that's correct. I'm sorry, I was, we made a revision to this this morning, so it's about, it's about 78,000. That is correct, you're right, I'm sorry, yes, correct.
So you have about two acre, or somewhere about two acres of runoff, if you would.
That is, that is correct.
Roughly, so that's going to have to be treated. And as far as stormwater goes, obviously, you'll have to comply with the DEQ standards. Have you thought about where you're going to place that? And the reason I ask that is we're deciding on the layout, if you would, and if the facility goes in a place where this layout would change, then you open yourself up to having to come back to the, to the Planning Commission for it. So my question is, is have you designed anything? Have you preliminary looked at it? Because it would be important to know that at this stage.
So we have not designed anything, we've not designed anything yet. Memory serves correctly, does this have a laser pointer on it? No, it does not. Up there around where the drain field is at, if you look on the GDP, that's the box in the kind of northeast corner.
Okay.
That contour, those contours there are kind of sloping down along that 29, it kind of drops down at the intersection, it's at a low spot, then comes up, and then starts to come back down. So I would think from a location standpoint of potential facilities, would possibly be something in that northwest corner. There would probably be something in the, potentially in the, the north corner, kind of middle north of, just due north, kind of to the left of the drain field, west of the drain field, and then potentially something in that southeast corner from a, just a small stormwater, stormwater facility. I mean, these would be, when I say small or incredibly small, they would just be, you know, small little, and they could even be level spreaders or something like that. They may not even be a pond, per se.
Yeah, I just wondered if there's going to be any changes to the layout because of it. It looks like it's fairly tight, you know, if you look off to the northeast, it's fairly steep in that location, so, and it all kind of goes down to like a little stream at the bottom left, if you would, off the sheet there, kind of comes down and goes down that little channel.
No, we could certainly, to your point, I mean, we could add a couple of potential locations.
Yeah, it'd just be good to know where it is, so you can make sure that you can get what you have on here done. And it doesn't have to be fully designed, just the location of where you want to put them.
Sure.
Sometimes you may find that the, when you do your geotech or your testing for your infiltration, you may find you can't do a bioretention facility or something along those lines, but, but it just depends on the way that's located. Because it also ties into, if you talk about the northwest corner, or that corner there has some trees and stuff like that over there, so would it change your buffering in that location? And then also, the outfall would be into a VDOT right-of-way, which VDOT would want to be interested in that for review purposes. Couple other questions. One is the overhead line that runs through the site. Have you pulled the deed on that and what restrictions are allowed with, underneath of the easement?
So the one that runs north, the one that runs northwest is actually the main, is the north-south, I'm sorry, runs the, along parallel to White Shop Road. That's actually the, that's actually the main line, it just appears to be a single-phase. And the one that runs to the, to the east is actually just a service line for a house. There's, there's just two wires hanging off of it, one's for cable. There's, there's just two wires hanging off of it, one's for cable, um, one's for that. The, in the past, we can pull this deed, that, that makes, we can, uh, we could definitely pull the deed in the past when we've done things like this. Not with, necessarily with Robert Wise, but as long as, we can, we can display things as long as they can be moved under the power lines, as long as they're not a permanent, as a permanent fixture. We can check that deed to make sure that there's not anything absolutely-
Yeah, I was just wondering, like, you know, if there's a pole and there's restrictions on grading around a pole or putting a building underneath of the, the line, if you would. Um, sometimes there's certain restrictions on that, especially in the event of a fire, which brings up another question, which would be how you're gonna provide fire access to the back part of the site in the event that the sheds catch on fire?
So it is the intent, um, of the applicant, and I think we talked about this with, with Sam and Neil, that we would be at site plan. There would be probably a small loop road that will be provided, it would be, you know, gravel, I, I, potentially. Um, there would be a small loop road that would be used, obviously, so people can walk to and from, you know, to and from the facilities, which would handle that. And again, if it's the desire of the commission, we can certainly add that to the GDP.
Yeah, I guess that might be more for Sam, I guess, in that regard, but I think we'd want to have some sort of fire access in the event that there's a fire, uh, to the back of the, the structures there, so. But, and if you are gonna do that, then would, that would change your impervious area calculation, it would change your lot coverage, so you'd probably want to know about that as well. Uh, what else do I have? So I guess, uh, the grass, um, is the, are you planning to plant similar to what's in that, in those pictures there? You're gonna base, you do mulch beds and things like that in front of the units to pretty them up for sale purposes?
So, the idea is the ones that are actually semi-visible from the two roads would have that kind of decoration all around it. Landscaping, flowers, anything we can do to spruce them up to attract customers, obviously, and also be looking good for the county purposes, so it's gonna dual purpose, right?
Yeah.
Um, all of the ones that you can't see from the roads, no, those are just gonna have, just gonna be the, the sheds sitting properly and level. We use, uh, cinder blocks for leveling them where necessary, because if you've been to that property, it's far from level, it's, you know, rolling, to say the least. But no, 90% of the sheds that are gonna be there won't even be visible by the road, based on the contour of the property.
And the only reason I ask that is, uh, is that as it, as the land does roll back and forth and where you place the structure, and if you start to put things around it, you know, whether you're gonna have to grade a flat area around that, because that would be part of your calculations in terms of the coverage. And as you look at the site and you look at how the site grades and comes into the site, uh, the limits of construction is fairly close to the access road around it, so I don't, did you actually look at the grading or draw some contours around it at all?
We have not.
To know that the LOD is actually correct and the acreage is, is correct on here? Because it looks like, when you start looking at it and you look at some of the areas where you're gonna place the sheds, it's gonna be, need to be a little flatter in certain areas, so you might have to do a little bit of grading in certain areas, and whether that was included in your evaluation?
Well, that's where we use the cinder blocks for leveling, we're not planning on doing any major grading at all.
Okay.
Every time we deliver a shed, sorry. Every time we deliver a shed in a backyard, it's extremely rare that we don't have to use a cinder block or two to make it level.
To level it.
So we do this every day. Yeah, there's not too many level spots in, in the state of Virginia for, for stuff like that, so we're used to doing that all the time, so we fully intend to do that on every one of these.
Yeah, you just have to look at the grading associated with what's on this plan. So you show the limits of disturbance around it, but if you don't know the grading works, it's kind of hard to know what your limit is, I would think, as an engineer.
No, absolutely, we would, we would handle that at, again, that would be what we would handle at a site plan, at a site plan phase for limits and structures.
So if we approve it and it has a limits of 1.03 acres, uh, limits of disturbance, and that limits goes to 2.5 acres, then what we approved doesn't match what you've presented. So it starts to get in whether it's some substantial conformance with what, uh, what was provided here. So it's, I guess, be conservative in your estimate would be a suggestion, um, because if, if it ends up coming in less, it's okay, usually, but if it comes in more, usually that becomes an issue to some extent.
We can definitely expand the LOD that, yeah, would not consider, in, in other jurisdictions we've done work in for special uses, that the LOD would be a substantial conformance or general conformance component, it, it's, but if, if you guys would like, yes, absolutely, if the commission would desire, we absolutely can. Yeah, we can absolutely expand the LOD, absolutely.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, was there environmental walkover done on the site to verify that there were no wetlands or aquatic plant materials or hydroxic material on site?
I walk, I-
From a wetland, like Williamsburg Environmental or Wetland Studies or somebody like that?
No, I don't believe that that was done. I've walked this site, um, I mean, it does not appear anywhere that there are any wetlands. There may be a small little finger that's just off-site, maybe, but it does not appear that there's anything, but does not appear.
Okay. And then, uh, have you spoken with the adjoining property owners? Have you had any conversation whatsoever with them?
No, we have not. There's, um, I, to be honest, I was quite shocked when somebody said earlier that they were residential, because to the right of, which I guess is the north, anyway, that's a very large, wide-open field that is being farmed. So I had no idea that that was residential, to be honest, and then even coming to the south of it, it's just a lot of, uh, you know, brush and woods, and I, I was quite stunned to hear somebody mention that that was residential on either of those properties, so.
It's zoned, it's zoned residential, I didn't know that there's houses, it said the owner was in New York off the GIS, but I don't see a whole bunch of houses, but it has residential zoning to it.
Okay, yeah, like I said, the one to the right of it is nothing but an open field that's being farmed, no structures or anything, and I don't know who's farming it, but, you know.
The industrial, the, the commercial or industrial use is right up the street, too, for the Piedmont Door Company. The garage door, overhead door company is right there, too, so.
Okay.
But, are you finished?
I got one last thing to ask, uh, and the last question I had was on the, uh, um, how do you do, so, so I, my shed, my house is a Capital Shed, so I'm familiar with the-
Well, thank you. Of course, probably before I owned it, but thank you anyway.
Yeah, yeah. But either way, um, they, they pick it up in a, in a truck and haul it to the site, right? You know, so I guess my question is, is, is the access that's there big enough to get in and out, no problem?
Absolutely, it's just, as you saw, might have saw in the video that he played, it's a standard-sized pickup truck with a small trailer behind it that we, yeah.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, anyone else? Ms. Stone?
I just have one more thing, I just want to be sure I understand. The water runoff is going to go into some kind of a holding pond, it's not gonna go on the neighbor, because that, it is very rolly, that whole track. So is it gonna roll to the neighbor, or are you gonna contain it on-site, because you have a lot of impervious surface? And I suspect he's gonna move more dirt than one acre, but-
So, so we have a natural outfall, so what we would be required to do is, we would detain the water and we will release it-
On your site?
On our site.
Right.
But there will be release, that, that's our outfall. I mean, so we would have to meet the standard for energy balance that's outlined in the code.
And you're gonna release it to where?
To the out, to the outfall location, so like, for example, where in the southeast corner, where the contours are kind of pointing up, that would be our natural outfall, and so we would have an outfall point that would be there.
Because also I believe that there's gonna probably be outfall on you from Route 29.
There probably is, well, yeah, there probably is.
Okay. Okay, so DEQ takes care of this?
Yeah, the applicant will design a fully engineered site plan that will be reviewed by DEQ, yeah.
But I do want to be clear, we will be discharging, there's water that is naturally going to that site that's discharging and leaving the property now. In, in speaking terms, just in layman's terms, we're not allowed to discharge any more than 80% of that number. So if there was one cubic feet or one unit being discharged on the property, we can only be, we can only discharge 80% of that, so eight tenths of that unit. I mean, in, in, in layman's terms, but I do want to be clear, we will be discharging at our prescribed outfall locations and in conformance with the state standards.
So you think, you haven't talked to the neighbor, though, so the neighbor doesn't know any of that? Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, um, sir, just a couple of things. The, uh, the road that's gonna be constructed to go in and then the parking lot and then the building, will that road and the parking lot be paved? You may have mentioned this, but is that paved or gravel?
We are, correct me if I'm wrong, that'll all be paved. That, all the way that you're seeing through there will be paved up to the parking spaces.
Okay, and the, the trip generation data that you've got, um, did that include during the construction phase when you've got trucks going in and out of there to build the road, the parking lot and the office building?
I, I don't think that, I don't think it does, to, to, to be candid, I really don't. It's just based on the final, it's based on the final use, and admittedly, that trip generation, there is not a trip generation for a shed or outdoor display.
Yeah.
So we kind of picked the best one that, that we could, but it does not, it does not include the construction equipment.
And then just one final thing, maybe for staff also, um, so the, the 40-foot buffer or setback on White Shop Road, that's okay? They aren't required to have 50 feet there, just like on 29?
It's pretty even, um, you, you basically, you go off the narrow side, um, I don't know which is the narrow side, it looks like 603 maybe is, um, but I would prefer the larger setback off of Route 29 for multiple reasons. But it does meet the current setback now, um, originally it did not, but the 40-foot could work for, for, for White Shop, if it's considered a corner lot.
Okay, all right, all right, thanks.
Yeah, a couple of questions, uh, do you have any other facilities this large with 300 units? No, what, what's the biggest facility you have?
I would guess about two acres, but that's just a guesstimate.
Okay, okay, and the, the reason you need 300 units is, uh, you, you can't have that many different models, so this is gonna be just a, a storage?
Oh, I, frankly, sir, we could have 800. There's, uh, lots of different models, lots of different colors, lots of different options, so, um, yeah, I mean, we could, we could easily have 300.
Okay.
We don't necessarily need 300 there, but obviously we want to be approved for as many as possible, but still working within the 25% or whatever it is, so, you know.
Okay, um, the, the sheds look very nice, are these, are all of them gonna look like this, or we're gonna, are there reconex containers also out there?
No, 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 no conex containers, no, I, um, I pride myself in selling only very high-end sheds, we don't sell what Home Depot or Lowe's sells, and, you know, maybe a prior Capital Sheds customer could vouch for that, I'm, I'm guessing, but no, we, um, but they're not all gonna look like what you see on there, honestly. What you see on there are going to be what you see from the roadways, but we saw a lot of, just a whole huge variety of sheds. But nothing of what you would ever come onto any, any lot and say, boy, that's a cheap shed.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't allow it, so, I have no desire for that, so.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, you say that you will normally not be open past dark, I'm not sure what that means. Why, why would you be open past dark?
Um, I, you know, I can't really, when we, uh, were asked that, I really wasn't sure how to answer that. I can't think of any instance that we were ever open past dark. I don't have any desire to be open past dark, but I'm afraid to, I guess, put in writing that we will never be open past dark, because what if there's an event that maybe we are 30 minutes past dark, I, I don't know, I, but-
But your normal business hours are not expected to be past?
Correct, right, correct, right now we're nine to 5:30.
You may have a delivery for some reason it gets delayed.
Or maybe a customer needs to meet us there late or something, I, I don't know, but I, I-
Delivery or something.
Yeah, but 99 out of 100 days, it's normal business hours, so.
And you talked about we would have normal lighting, uh, obviously lighting, we don't want this lit up, you know, there, there are lighting restrictions that the county has.
Yeah, I would defer to Ryan on that, but whatever is regulation, we're gonna conform with that 100%. I, I rely on him saying, this is the lighting you need to have here, this is what is conforming, and, and I'll say, okay, we're gonna do that, so.
The intent, Mr., the intent, Mr. Zegley, is not to have this like a car parking lot, where it's lit up like the sun. That, that, that's absolutely, that's absolutely not the intent. So these would just meet the current, you know, the, the standards that are required, half a foot candle at the property line, three tenths of a foot candle, or even zero, if that's the county's desire at the property line, and three tenths at the right-of-way, which is pretty much next to nothing, and then just whatever is required for the site. And then obviously, we need lighting at the, you know, main, the entrances for the doors and the handicap spaces and, you know, some little bit of security lighting there, but the intent is not to have this lit up like it's a car dealership.
Okay, and, and the road that goes off to another property there, have you talked to that owner about making sure they still have access to get, to use that road?
You know, I've had no conversations at all with the neighbors. While I, I am hearing that there is a shared roadway, um, if you look at the actual survey, the entrance that we're talking about using is, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's 100% on this property and not at all on the neighbor's property, so I'm not really sure how to address that. I mean, as you can see, the, uh, that entrance is not shared, although I hear that it's supposed to be.
I think they're talking about, give me one second here. It is a corner on that, um, you, you gotta hold it down, I think, right, Sam? There's a corner on that.
Yeah, the plat, the plats indicate an easement, yeah.
I see it's a pointer on this, on the clicker.
There's an, there's an, there's an easement, there, it doesn't have to be new necessarily, but there is an easement that's dedicated as a shared access point for both lots.
Oh, yeah, I'm changing all that stuff, sorry.
So as I understand it, it's an easement, but not necessarily sharing, that entrance, it's already there?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, so.
It's a 50 by 100 joint access easement that was set when this property was subdivided out.
Right, so I guess what I was saying, or the way I understand it, the entrance is completely on this 10-acre parcel, but the shared easement, the neighbor can certainly come over and say, hey, I'm, I'm gonna share this bottom border of the property, and of course, no problem, we're gonna work with that neighbor, but, but the entrance itself, as it is right now, at least the way I see it, is totally on this 10-acre parcel, so.
Okay.
So the entrance and the easement, I think, may be two different things, but, uh, I don't want to speak.
Talked about adding jobs to the county. Were we talking about two, were we talking about 20?
Um, five to 10, 15 in that neighborhood, obviously, I don't know what the growth potential is, um, till we get in there and get settled, but, um, we're not Walmart, don't get me wrong, but, you know, we're, we're a lot more jobs than what's there right now, I can, I can say that, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
I, I'll go back to the, um, entrance, to the easement. Sam, could you remind me, it looks like we got 23 acres next door are one. Just generally speaking, that could be one, in the future, it could be one residential house site, or it could be, could it be 15, could it be?
Yeah, yeah, it could, it could be, it could be multiple.
You're the first, you're the first one in, but would burden could be placed upon them in improving that, depending on how the other person could get access, whether they say, I want to share this access? Could they potentially have to put their own turn lane in and improve it if they made a change?
Yeah, as far as the adjacent user?
Right, the adjacent.
The adjacent user, depending on their use, uh, could have to either extend a turn lane or add a turn lane, or go further down White Shop Road, um, and have another entrance, um, as well, so there's, there's different options there on parcel 89 that's shown on the screen. But there is a, the only thing I was trying to point out, and a lot of times this is done with the landowner, you're talking about two private landowners here with a private easement. Um, VDOT is gonna determine where that best entrance is, and they have an entrance today, so that would probably be the most likely starting point. But there is a 50 by 100-foot shared joint access easement, and the neighbor, Mr. Wise and his neighbor are gonna have to work through that at some point. Yes, the entrance will be, could change if 89 divi, you know, that's, if it's 23 acres, I mean, you could see 15, 18 lots there, potentially, um, you know, subdivided lots. Um, I just want to point out to the commission that that wasn't always zoned residential, it's actually zoned light industrial, um, as well, and that was rezoned to residential. It's been, been some time now, but it was, uh, zoned specifically for subdivision, it just never has been moved forward to date, so.
And Mr. Burton, if I could add, when, Sam is absolutely correct, when our entrance is there, we would, like I, I had stated earlier, we're probably going to be a low-volume commercial entrance, which is a VDOT standard, uh, typical standard entrance. So if the adjacent property next door were to be subdivided, or that entrance would have to be re-analyzed again by that applicant with VDOT, and, you know, whatever turn lane analysis, right turn lanes, left turn lanes, site distance that they have, anything like that, you know, they would be, the onus would be on them to upgrade that entrance, or VDOT would not give them an entrance permit.
Right, good. You're squared away under your own purposes, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, um, well, just anticipating possible residences, uh, how would you feel about doing a little bit of buffering on, on that side?
I'm sorry, which side?
Uh, the side facing the residential property. Uh, the side facing the residential property.
So the southern, the southern border in red?
Southern and eastern side, um, unless I'm over asking, um, in terms of the code.
Mr. Chairman, to Commissioner Burton, I think that's a a fair consideration through the use permit, so.
Yeah, I mean, I I don't, I don't think the applicant would have any problem providing some additional screening.
Okay.
You know, along that, along that southern, southern border, he he's not here to to be a nuisance, and and so, yeah, I I don't think there's, he wants the site to look just as, candidly, just as good as you guys want it to be, I mean, he really does.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A few questions I had was, um, again, back to the entrance, um, are you blocking that off at nighttime to keep people driving into the driveway? That's something you consider about, since it's gonna be shared?
I guess that's something that we would have to consider, um, the honest answer is I haven't thought about that at this point, but, um, I guess I would prefer to leave it open, because I would encourage people to come in, look around, and browse around if they want, and then come back the next day, hopefully, and see us when we're open, but, uh, I guess I'm open-minded on that, I I haven't really thought that far.
That might be something, yeah, just to consider, and then, um, if it's, especially if it's, if it's ever accessed by anybody else, your adjoining neighbor, and, um, I see, any tall sheds that we need to be worried about, nothing extremely tall, right, like two-story sheds, big sheds, mini barns?
No, we, everything has to be able to get on a trailer for us to deliver, and we have, uh, thirteen or thirteen-and-a-half foot height restrictions to, you know, Virginia law to, and that's with being three foot up on a trailer, so, you know, your normal shed is ten, twelve feet tall, so.
Um, going back to the grading of that land, and we're talking about cinder blocks, um, is it nor, or not normal, has there been a case where you stacked maybe too high on one side, just?
Oh, absolutely.
You know what I mean, and is that permissible, and with, with how this land's gonna be used, 'cause it is, it is a building structure, it's, I I know you're, you're not permitted, and it's not, you know, building code isn't coming out and inspecting these, 'cause they're prefab, so, I mean, if we stacked, if you got one with no cinder blocks on one side and one with eight on the backside, that might-
There are times, yeah, where we stack multiple cinder blocks, absolutely.
Okay, all right, and then my final is, I know some people like electricity in their sheds, um, are you, uh, any of these pre-wire, are you wa, running power to any of the sheds at all?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, not even for like, security lights on the edge of them, or, okay.
Not at all.
Thank you.
Kate?
So what is the, um, projected or intended kind of service area radius if this were to go through?
Um, I just wanna understand your question, like, as far as deliveries from there, or where our customers come from there?
Delivers.
Um, I guess the honest answer is, I don't know, because, um, from what I'm told, a lot of the traffic that's on there is people traveling from Charlottesville to Fairfax, and who knows?
So my concern is more coming down White Shop Road, I mean, that narrows as you get further down out towards fifteen, and you got farm equipment, you got people that just fly, and it's a narrow road, and I know, I mean, the trucks that you're talking about, I understand exactly what they are, well-versed in that, um, so I just have concerns about, you know, if, I have concerns about, um, you know, using White Shop Road, um, for any type of deliveries, and not twenty-nine being your main way to deliver, now, there's always gonna be exceptions, like if there's somebody further down White Shop, you got a little way in there, but, um.
Well, honestly, there's really no way to answer that, I I have no crystal ball, I honestly don't know, but I can tell you that, right now, we do deliveries on all kinds of roads all over Virginia, that's, you know, um, I I really don't know how to answer your question, so.
Okay.
And, uh, excuse me, sorry, Ms. Frees, I I would also like to add, I I think, from a VDOT perspective, the site already has an entrance off of White Shop Road, which is, you know, secondary or tertiary compared to twenty-nine, getting an entrance on twenty-nine when we already have an existing entrance off a secondary road is, I'm not saying it's impossible, but would definitely be scrutinized, so unfortunately, I don't know that we have an entrance, I don't know that VDOT would give us another entrance on twenty-nine, to be honest.
No, I'm not talking, my my concern is not at your entrance, I'm saying, if you are to come out of your proposed site here and take a right, or a left, I mean, and be using White Shop as your main way to get to the eastern side for deliveries, I mean, I personally have driven my truck and cattle trailer on that road billions of times, and had to take the ditch several times because of people flying through there, it gets very narrow.
Oh, I see what you're saying, oh, okay, I'm I misunderstood, okay, understood.
Yeah, I'm gonna get to that.
Yeah, that's a-
I don't know how to answer that, I'm sorry.
Okay, anyone else, Mr. Price?
Uh, just one final thing, um, so are you moving an existing Capital Sheds facility to here from somewhere else, or you're expanding, and this will be a new source of jobs and economic generator?
So I guess it's to be determined, but I think this is just gonna be an all-new facility, you know.
Yes.
So you talked about the different types of sheds, and you talked about the ones, maybe some landscaping around it, you're gonna put those where you, those are the ones that might be visible from twenty-nine, out of the three hundred sheds, how many sheds you think will be visible from twenty-nine?
Um, can I, where's your, can you pull up the map thing, I mean, the, the plat here, or the drawing?
Yeah.
Um, for, well, from twenty-nine, twenty, thirty, maybe, forty at the most, um, and then, of course, the ones on White Shop Road as well, coming down, so.
Right, okay.
Those we wanna just highly decorate, and, you know, I think Ryan mentioned earlier, you know, what you guys are looking for, I'm wanting the same thing, I want it to be just as beautiful and as nice as can be, anything that's visible from those roads, so I just wanna make it as great as can be to attract customers to come in there, so.
I mean, the the sheds are very nice, and my concern is, is this gonna look like a a a mini development, you got three hundred units out there, it looks like little houses.
Well, but again, you won't be able to see, you know, most of those, you won't be able to see, because if you're familiar with the property, you can only see but so far into the property before it goes down that, that hill and starts rolling, uh, the bulk of that property, you can't even see from, from the road, oh, sorry.
Mr. Zegley, the, um, along twenty-nine, for example, where the setback line is, where the fifty-foot setback, that, it breaks, the the natural grade from twenty-nine that you can see, it rolls over, and so, uh, honestly, you 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 may not see as many sheds as Mr. Wise would like to see from-
Even from the northbound.
Yeah, yeah, the, from the northbound side, even that Mr. Wise would like to see, to be, to be quite honest, 'cause it does, it does roll over, it's not, at that point, twenty-nine is not level with the site, it's a little below, and then as it goes up, it rolls, it rolls over, so, I I I think you'd be hard-pressed to see any more than probably two rows, just based on the memory serves correctly of how that, how that grade looks when we went out there and walked it, thank you.
At fifty-five miles an hour or more.
At fifty-five, that's conservative, by the way, at fifty-five, probably more like eighty.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay. At this time, we open a public hearing, if there are anyone who would like to address this application, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chair, come up and give your full name for the record, yes, sir?
Hello, my name's Rick Savage, uh, I live across twenty-nine from, uh, where this property is, excuse me, my main concern is that intersection there at, at White Shop and and twenty-nine, it is a terribly dangerous intersection, and we have wrecks constantly, it was, yesterday was a terrible wreck there, so if you go adding more traffic and and deliveries and more trucks, I mean, we're just setting ourselves up for more accidents, it's, um, it's bad enough like it is now, I've got young girls in my house that drive, it's, it's a really dangerous intersection, and I don't know what a solution would be, but it's, I can't see any way that we're not gonna have more problems if you keep adding more volume, everybody comes in there, then they gotta come back out, everything that they sell, it's gotta go out and be delivered, then they've gotta come back in again, so it's, it's just constantly more and more, and and I live across the road, I know they're talking about, you know, you won't be able to see them all, it just depends on where you look, if if you pay attention, you can see virtually everything on that property, I mean, you'd have to be blind not to see it, there may be some little remote spots you can't see, but it it's gonna be visible, it's gonna look like a town over there, and and there's already enough light pollution, those stinking billboards, when I sit on my Porsche, all I can see is those lights up in the air, they're constantly beeping, I could hear the beeping for months over top of the traffic, it it, that's just gonna make it worse, but but like I said, my main concern is, is the traffic at that intersection, it is horrible, you you can't see, you think it's clear, you try to pull out, people coming over that hill, flying, and if you've got more people going there, it's, it's gonna be a really bad situation, thank you.
Thank you, sir, anyone else? Yes, sir?
Good evening, Don H. Stevensburg, I wanna apologize that I don't have any, um, music follow me tonight, but, um, again, I wanna thank everyone for their contribution in keeping the county safe, because the Culpeper County is a great area, and that's the reason why we live here, um, I would also like to address the imperious areas, I don't think they were calculated properly, uh, no dedicated road for fire rescue, uh, no professional wetland study was done, uh, no conversation with adjacent landowner, uh, they didn't even have a con, and, you know, it really surprises me that they didn't even know they had a shared easement, when you have a property, you know everything about your property, uh, no clue as far as job opportunities for people in Culpeper, um, my first question is, how much tax revenue will the Culpeper gain by approving this project, um, three hundred units, that is a storage shed city, and is, it, can that also be considered the imperious area, you know, that will consider, will be a considerable amount of runoff, um, once again, we have an applicant that is grossly unprepared and can't answer simple questions, this is a prime example of an applicant that wants to come and take advantage of our community, but yet, but by not being a real member of the community, 'cause you, the first thing you are when you're a community, you talk to your neighbors, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, anyone else?
Clay Kitts, I live at the, uh, down White Shop, there's two-
What was his name again, Clay?
Clay Kitts, K-I-T-T-S, uh, we live like, two houses down, uh, on the right side of, like, right beside the property, uh, it's like, me and my father-in-law both had the two houses there, uh, yeah, I'm concerned, uh, with the gentleman that lives across the street, you know, I don't know if you can go to the Riva Fire Department and ask them how many wrecks they respond to on a weekly basis at that intersection, uh, the stop sign gets hit at least once a week and is be, being replaced, it's an extremely busy neighborhood, I agree with you, uh, ma'am, about going down White Shop and trying to make deliveries down there, it's, I drive a small SUV, and going down there is scary myself, and if they're talking about making a left-hand turn and trying to go down White Shop to get to fifteen, that's gonna cause major, major problems on that road, um, you know, I, I'm not here to say, because I think everybody has a right to have a business and stuff, but the fact that they don't have anything off of twenty-nine to to get in and out of the property, or, and then a plan, and I agree with the other gentleman, they have no, you know, like, what their jobs are gonna be, you know, three hundred sheds, it's gonna look like a small, a small city, so, that's, that's my concerns.
Okay, thank you very much, sir, anyone else? Declare the public hearing closed, and we've heard comments, um, on both sides, and, um, commissioners, any other discussion?
One question for staff.
Go ahead, sir.
Um, Sam or Neil, um, do you know what, do we have crashed out at that intersection, or do you know what extent the crashes are there, or can get that information?
Yeah, we do, um, I don't know it off the top of my head, I mean, we, we, VDOT does post that information, um, and I did mention that in the staff report specifically, just because there are multiple accidents every year, um, at this intersection currently, um, we've had, unfortunately, had fatalities, um, at this intersection recently, it's twenty nineteen, I believe, um, I will share that there's not one cause for these accidents, unfortunately, um, there's multiple, um, it's twenty-nine itself, the median is very long, wide, um, people try to stack too much in there at times, that causes problems, you have driveways on the other side of twenty-nine that have no D cell lane, um, that's a problem, um, so there's multiple reasons, but it it's continuing to be problem, uh, problematic, but probably the number one reason is because the background traffic on twenty-nine continues to increase, part of the reason why Mr. Wise wants to be there, uh, but we have about twenty-six to thirty thousand vehicles that travel on that corridor every single day, um, and about two thousand that come up right Shop Road to try to hit that intersection, so that's why there's continued to be an issues with that intersection, unfortunately, at this time, we do not have a concrete plan on how to address that, the board recently, um, has asked staff to look into an arterial management plan with VDOT to study not just this section of twenty-nine, but actually, the whole southern section from the last interchange at two ninety-nine to James City Road in Madison County, um, because this isn't the only intersection that we have concerns with, Mary Mack Road has even more, Riva Road has just as many, if not even more than this intersection as well, as far as accidents, so, it's not a singular issue of White Shop Road and Route twenty-nine, unfortunately, at this point, um, I don't have anything that the applicant can specifically do to help you all, um, as far as mitigate that, other than have the entrance pushed off from the intersection like they have done, um, and it's just up to the planning commission, you know, whether you think it meets Article seventeen standards to to recommend approval at this point, so.
You know, Sam, um, um, well, not just directed to you, but, um, that is a a real setback, um, when it comes to this, um, property, good business, and I, um, the sheds, I've seen many of those, my father had had one, and, um, and, um, you know, very presentable, you know, when we see those, that intersection is a, a very dangerous, um, intersection, and my mother got hit there crossing, um, and, um, and we were fortunate that, you know, she, um, was not, uh, it was not a fatality, so, and the church is on that road, um, also, which adds more, um, especially when it comes to the weekends, um, there, it just seems like if ever was a time for VDOT or, you know, to look at that particular, particular, um, intersection is is now, you know, um, I know, um, we had stated before that the Board of Supervisors decided at, you know, um, not to, um, make any changes or anything, right, or to move further.
It wasn't necessarily the Board of Supervisors, it it was not gonna score anywhere close to high enough amongst the district to to receive any smart-scale scoring to be able to to get funding, uh, to improve that intersection, um, so.
They should have, how many years ago was that maybe?
That's, that's been, no, that's, it's actually moved down the list, unfortunately, which means there are other intersections that are having more problems than this one, um, so, that's complicated it for us as far as receiving funding to get things here, and that's why the board has taken the act of trying to do some arterial management planning so that we can build a pipeline of projects along this section of twenty-nine, so.
Okay, so the good thing is that some attention is being drawn to it, and, um, eventually, someone, hopefully, it won't be, um, many more accidents there before, you know, um, something is done, so, um, but anyway, we have a, um, what we have before us is what we, um, have to make our decision on, and so, we have seen the zoning, and, you know, any other situation other than the traffic, that is- other than the traffic, that is the thing that will be most concerning to us. So commissioners, what do you?
I want to make one more comment.
Go ahead.
So this is directed toward staff. The VDOT cannot require a user to do a D cell lane or maybe an acceleration lane off that property, because it's been zoned like that for a long time. Can they do anything to help?
So there, as far as their entrance itself on White Shop?
No, on the corner, to come off of 29 and then to get back on 29, which is where the problem is, because the site distance, I'm sure is, it's over the little knoll, and you're pulling out with the truck, the trailer, you know, the slow motion acceleration.
Yeah.
Is there anything that we can?
There could be, you know, my guess is that it's not going to meet the minimum standard criteria to have this applicant do that. But that is something that VDOT also pushes off to a site plan stage typically. There are turn lanes today. I mean, there are turn lanes, a left turn lane coming 29 south onto 603, and then 29 north, you know, there's a small right turn lane coming onto the acceleration lane, if you, if you will, on Route 29, you know, coming off of 603 onto 29 north is a potential. But that, there's some serious grade concerns there, no matter what happens. That grade most likely won't change anytime soon.
Plus, if they pull out into the crossover area to go towards Charlottesville.
Sure.
And they got a lot of length on their, their truck and trailer, or anybody, it's going to be more dangerous because they're sticking out.
Right now, VDOT's only looked at what I would call cosmetic changes, and those would be to put stop bars basically in the median so that people don't overstack in the median and wait in the turn lanes.
Yeah.
And that, that only happens certain times a day for the most part, but it does happen. I've seen it myself there. But it, unfortunately, as I mentioned, there are no real concrete plans at this point, and that's why we've had to really study this whole corridor to try to develop some specific solutions for those intersections.
And what seems to be the, the main issue there is, is speed.
Speed and volume.
Because when, you know, they come from, you know, going east or whatever the situation might be there, or north, yeah, east, then you go into that curve. When they come through there, it's just a short distance before you get there. And with the trucks crossing over with those is, yeah, it's going to be a challenge. But that's what we're here for. So, Mr. Price, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing for the applicant, then one thing for Sam. So sir, you've got a pickup hauling a trailer that's got the shed on the back. So what is the, what's the approximate length of that?
Should know this, but the standard size pickup truck, whatever that is, trailer itself is 24.
Yeah.
So pickup truck is, you know, I drive a.
Ford 150 out in the parking lot here, and it's about the same length. We use Ram 3500s or Ford F350s, if you're familiar with those. But it's literally a standard size pickup truck, full-size pickup truck.
Single cab, long bed?
Yes.
So the truck plus the trailer, so what, about 30 feet or so?
Well, the trailer itself is 24. I mean, even if we rounded it up to close to 30, and then the trailers, I mean, the truck is maybe 20, so 45, 50 feet total.
All right. And for Sam, so like the crossover there, 29, where you come out of White Shop, say you're going to go south towards Charlottesville, I mean, how much room you've got to get, say 40-foot vehicle in there?
Thankfully, at that median, you probably are good lengthwise. Many of medians on 29 wouldn't be for regular usage. This one's a little bit longer, a little bit wider for that purpose. I think it could fit in there with the trailer. Mr. Wise would need to be able, should be able to project that a little bit closer based on the geometry that's there. I wouldn't be able to do it on the spot myself, so.
And then I've just got a comment. So the issue with additional traffic going in and out of that intersection on the 29 from White Shop Road, you know, we would run into these same concerns no matter what gets built there. Today, we're talking about a pickup truck and trailers, but Sam mentioned, what, 15 to 18 lots that could go in there, and how many extra car trips a day would that be in and out of there? So anything that goes in there that generates activity is going to have the same issue at that intersection. So, I mean, that creates a problem for anybody that wants to do something there.
May I comment on that, too? So, yes, I mean, like I said earlier, we're not Walmart. If I get 10 or 15 customers in a day, we're doing really good. I wanted to say that earlier. We're not talking a ton of customers here. We're really not. So for whatever that's worth. And I, and honestly, I had the same thought earlier, is that any, I guess the way I understand it's zoned, this zoning allows for many types of businesses. I assume we're the lowest volume traffic you could probably get for a business on there. I just can't think of any other type of business that would be lesser traffic than ours. You know, I mean, we do okay, don't get me wrong, but like I say, 10 or 15 customers in a day, and I'm doing pretty good. So I hope that helps, so.
And we, thank you for, for adding that. And, you know, hopefully you see when it comes to our situation, you know, that safety, if we already have an issue there, and then we are adding on to it, then that's, you know, that's a consideration that we have to give. But, but thank you very much. We'll take it from there. Okay.
I'll just say, I mean, given as is presented and the concerns that were addressed tonight by fellow planning commissioners, I can't support approval. At most, I could support tabling it to get some of this other information from the applicant, but I just, I don't see how we can approve this tonight.
Okay.
I just want to add one other thing and to Mrs. Thornhill's point about potential ASL.
We got a motion.
It's not a motion.
Oh, I thought she said a motion. No, I thought she was making a motion. Excuse me.
Just a comment.
Excuse me. Okay, all right.
To Mrs. Thornhill's point about potential ASL lane, I think that's something that you could consider there to get traffic. You could even, I don't know how far down you had to have to go to get to a light. I'm going to plead stupidity here. But, you know, to actually force traffic to go right and then turn around and come back, you know, and get it off the road. But if you did do that, to your point, Ryan, is that you wouldn't want to put the pond in that corner because you'd be taking up potential area for the ASL lane. So I'd really like to see how you're going to plan for that area to make sure that it's not impacting potential, even if you, as you go forward with site plan or whatever. So, thank you.
Yeah. I'm just going to make a comment, too. I, I don't think that you can today pass it legitimately on my mind. So I think if you could come, take some time and come back to us without killing it tonight, I think you should take a look at other traffic solutions. Maybe the acceleration lane is part of it, maybe additional screening, but it feels real incomplete. So I'm just suggesting that maybe I would support tabling it also and give you some time to come back to us.
Anyone else?
I'll just comment. I think this is a reasonable request for this industrial parcel. And this applicant's willing to, to work with the county. He wants it to be a success. And I, you know, he's even agreed to add a little landscaping at the, a buffering at the, between him and the residential. So I do not support denying this, but I would support tabling it if the applicant feels they can come back with further helpful information.
Okay. Yes.
Yeah, and I would concur with that, too. I think there are a lot of questions still that has to do with screening, what's visible from where, the road, you know, the fire access and so forth, that will also impact upon the impervious calculations and so forth. And I, I think there are a lot of, a lot of questions that still have to be answered that, before we can go forward.
Okay. Yes.
Add one more, one last thing, and that's along the frontage, you know, and a lot of times we'll see like a little berm, and then the trees above on, planted on the berm to basically block some of the view shed. I don't know that you need it, but it's something you might want to consider. That's it for me.
Okay.
Sam, refresh my memory, timeline-wise, if we do table, what do we?
No, Commissioner Reeves, you have, you have 60 more days of review time still.
So September's meeting?
Yeah, September Planning Commission would probably be the last, based on our current code, the way it's written now. Before you would need to render a recommendation and send it forward to the board.
I think the applicant has a, something that they can carry with them to VDOT also to say, you know, that you've actually been here. And if it is, you know, tabled, and that's the direction we go, then, you know, maybe it'll start the wheels spinning some more on this process, and maybe something positive will come out of that. But, but okay. So we had all of our comments, and now we had a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that case U-2246-24-1 be tabled to the September regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise? You get that more again? One. Okay, all right. We will send it forward to the board with the recommendation. Well, we're going to table it because for 60 days, okay? All right, to our September meeting, I should say. All right. Thank you very much. Good presentation. Okay. Okay. Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance. It's case ZTA 1224-1. The Planning Commission will consider a revision to Appendix A, the zoning ordinance, specifically Article 8B, Planned Unit Development, or PUD. The proposed revision is intended to realign district standards with the goals identified in the 2023 Comprehensive Plan by updating various procedures, provisions, and regulations, namely with the Development Standards Section. The draft, as currently prepared, will plea, excuse me, repeal and replace Article 8B in its entirety. The Planning Commission will determine whether the proposed ordinance amendment is necessary to further the general purpose of promoting health, safety, or general welfare of the public and other purposes found in the Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-2283 and 2285.
Ms. Chairman, this, this text amendment is what we're looking at, is specifically zoning text amendment for Article 8B, as Neil read there, for the Planned Unit Development or PUD ordinance. If you remember, we had a hearing and reviewed the proposed amendment, or at least the initial draft of it, back on your May Planning Commission meeting. We received some comments that night from the Planning Commission, and the staff has gone back and addressed some of those, some of the changes to the ordinance to, and I'm going to have Harrison actually walk through those, those changes that you've seen since May in the ordinance. But by and large, we didn't receive a lot of additional feedback from the Planning Commission. Maybe we will tonight receive some additional. It is a large ordinance. You know, it is a significant ordinance. It's not one that's been used much in the county. We have two pieces today. If you remember that there's only a PUD that are very large developments. One that's after 20 years after it was approved as starting, and that's, or has been started the past couple of years, and that's Clevengers. The other one that was approved years ago that has not started is one out at Boston. Those are both very large developments. And that's not necessarily the idea of a PUD moving forward. If you look back at your Comprehensive Plan from 23 that you all reviewed and that the board eventually adopted, the growth areas have kind of been more centric now around the town of Culpeper. And inside and around the town of Culpeper, we have some larger parcels, but there are some parcels that are, that are smaller, that potentially could yield a mixed-use type PUD development. So I think one of the bigger tasks of the ordinance potentially would be to lower that acreage threshold. For, for, right now and for many years since this has been adopted, the, to even consider doing a PUD, you'd have to have 200 acres. I think that's a high threshold. I think that, that, that number should be lowered. You're going to see in here that we have, I think, that set potentially at 10 acres. It could be something other than 10 acres, but something lower than 200, I think, would be pretty important. The other major shift that you see is, is requirement for 50% open space, which isn't a major shift, but allowing you to basically buy back into that 50% open space with an incentive-based development, meaning that we're going to get hopefully a better hire or different quality development than what we see in some of our residential subdivisions today, to buy down some of that open space. And then lastly, and hopefully I'm not stealing all of Harrison's thunder here, but there's, there's a buyback to increase your density potentially, depending on the type of residential development that you do, mainly multifamily or cottage court-type development, something that would encourage or incentivize a little mixed use as far as residential uses go. You all see that the nature of what we have today, and it's primarily single-family detached. We have seen some town home development recently. But this ordinance kind of fits the picture for those sites in and around the town that are identified as the growth area in the comp plan now, and just allows for more flexibility of those parcels to potentially be used as a PUD or a planned unit development. Mr. Perman in our office has gone and has developed a presentation. Most of it you've seen from last time, so we don't need to dwell on, on that part. But if we go towards the back of the presentation, it kind of gets into some of those changes, and some of the things that the commissioners may have comments on or that you think need to be addressed. So. Ms. Chairman, if you like, Harrison can come forward. I think the pointer, the clicker's still up there, so at the podium.
Could you come forth, give your name for the record?
Harrison Perman, Principal Planner with Culpeper County Planning and Zoning. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. So we are bringing back this discussion on the PUD that we had. I do believe it was the last month. We did, not only did we address multiple changes that were brought up by members of the commission, but also did additional revisions as well. I'm going to just breeze by through this PowerPoint real quickly. I kind of just goes over some of the points Sam has already talked about, and then also goes into detail about how some of the aspects of the PUD, specifically the incentive program, would work. So just overall, just of a wide change. And as Sam already had mentioned, you know, the 200-acre minimum is a bit too large for our current identified growth areas in the Comprehensive Plan, specifically the area around Knolls Mill, the area off of Ira Hoffman Extended, and other smaller parcels in and around the town, around the town. Additionally, and after going through the existing PUD ordinance, staff kind of came to the conclusion that we could design something that is much more flexible in regarding to what development can occur in these growth areas, as well as incentivize higher-quality developments. As you will see in a moment, these proposed changes do hit multiple aspects of our Comprehensive Plan's goals, pathways, and action items, as well as this works in concert with the current discussions that we've been having in the work sessions regarding to the A1 IRA development rates. So I'm not, I'm not going to read through all this, but basically it kind of hits more or less every chapter in the Comprehensive Plan. Specifically, what's really important is it does hit our land use goals in Chapter 2 of the Comprehensive Plan, specifically our vision to, to basically preserve our ag and rural areas and focus growth around the town, and our, specifically our pathways to steer growth generally around the town, focusing on the, within the urban services boundary and future growth areas. Some of those action items do include encouraging those master-planned neighborhoods and mixed-use developments, revising portions of the zoning and subdivision ordinances to allow and incentivize mixed-use development. Kind of moving on, also talking about quality of life factors, as we'll touch on in the incentives program, and even also, and revising the code to facilitate these aspects. Finally, also in regards to Chapter 2, even supporting and trying to incentivize diverse housing. As I will talk more later, we don't have an affordable housing initiative. There's a lot of regulation that goes through that with having the state basically give us, give their consent to our affordable housing program and all that fun stuff. So we have found a way to kind of work into incentivizing mixed-use, a diverse housing stock in these developments without having to worry about tripping up with the Commonwealth's ways of how they define affordable housing. Additionally, it covers over aspects of Chapter 3, which is our transportation, including ensuring future changes in addition to the transportation system, maintain or improve upon existing safety conditions, as well as trying to elevate public transportation and other forms of transportation, such as bicycle and pedestrian. and other forms of transportation such as bicycle and pedestrian, as well as trying to adapt to future trends in the transportation sphere. Just to further hurry along on some of the reasonings behind these changes, you know, working toward, ensuring that our environmental and historic resources in Culpeper County are respected and protected areas of the county, making sure that these developments don't have a negative impact on our environment and on our watershed and everything downstream. Additionally, with economic development, trying to put emphasis on ensuring future economic development is compatible with the existing land use fabric, which we'll get on to a little bit later. Additionally, just going through Chapter six and seven real quick, just working with providing prompt and effective community resources while logically expanding and enhancing those related facilities. And similar with Chapter seven regarding efficient utility services that are necessary and beneficial to the citizens of Culpeper County. So to highlight areas that the PUD is being designed to be placed in, specifically our future growth area in the Bragg's Corner Eastern Business Area Plan. In the comprehensive plan, we talk about how PUD is very suitable for areas shown as mixed use in the comprehensive plan. They can, obviously, since this is a rezoning that a developer can apply for, they can apply for a PUD anywhere. Obviously, based on the comprehensive plan, we would, we would, staff would be saying that this, that PUDs are only acceptable within the future growth areas primary in the, primarily in areas shown as mixed use. Staff could see a PUD proposal in other areas within the future growth areas that aren't shown as mixed use, but as a caveat that they would have to, that the intensity and uses proposed in those PUDs be reflective of what's shown in the future land use plan. So for example, in the Catalpa area, if a growth area, so obviously the prime PUD area would be this mixed-use area, but we could have someone propose a PUD within some of this agricultural area off Ira Hoffman Extended, which is in the growth area. Staff would basically say that, yes, this is within a growth area, but the intensities and, and uses kind of provided should reflect more or less what we talked about is residential low density in our future land use plan, which is generally our R-one districts. Moving on to revised PUD, so the way we have devised this new planned unit development ordinance is basically when you have a PUD, your land's either going to be mixed use or open space. Specifically, you, either the land's going to be able to have a wide range of residential, commercial, office miscellaneous uses that are allowed by right or conditionally, or assuming you don't meet any incentives, half of it's going to have to be preserved in open space. The reason why we have it that high is to not only encourage developers to look into our incentive programs and try to provide us higher quality developments, but also in case they do not go for that incentive program, there'll be enough open space to counteract any environmental impacts from this denser and mixed-use developments. So the initial density is twelve dwelling units per acre unless an incentive is met. That is akin to our, our four districts. Additionally, we have no lot size minimum with that twelve DUA, thus to allow for more flexible standards instead of having just cookie-cutter developments of, say, X amount of acres each and every lot, allowing for different types of housing such as, say, duplexes, townhomes, cottage courts, et cetera. Additionally, we do have a maximum lot coverage of thirty-five percent for residential developments unless an incentive is met, and then sixty percent for mixed use and non-residential developments. That thirty-five and sixty is what's currently in our code for the R-four and RCS districts.
Can I stop you for a second?
Yes, ma'am.
You're running through this and it's all running together in my head.
Yes, ma'am. I do apologize. Can I slow down?
And I understand that. All right, I want to back up and ask you, first, why do we want to incentivize, why don't we make it, this is part of the rules for PUD? We keep talking about incentivizing, which becomes a staff consideration down the road, whoever sit in your seat, their seats. So why, why do we have to have it as an incentive? Why can't we just say, this is the rule?
That is definitely a path we can go down on. I think one fear is if we started prescribing so many different aspects in these codes, it just would not be used at all.
Well, there's a lot right here. I mean, that is a lot of information that is this percent, that percent. Why are we not just?
I would say, and Sam can correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of these aspects right here is what you'll see in any of our zoning districts regarding the density levels, lot size minimum, max lot coverage, lot widths, height setbacks.
Well, this page, yeah, okay, I agree. But I'm just telling you that there's a lot of percent of this, percent of that, and incentive. And I'm saying why we, your thought process on why do incentives, to make it better for the developer?
To make it better for both of us, so they can have more to build and we can ensure that we're going to get higher quality developments as a trade-off. I mean, we could go down the pathway of requiring to have X, Y, and Z, and I think an original version of the PUD did have it as more of a checklist of you have to have this, that, the other. And we can create a version that kind of talks about that. The reason we went down the incentive path is we figured for flexibility and to make it more of a negotiation talking point, you have an incentive structure that will encourage them to go that way, instead of just being like, okay, we'll go with the bare minimum and just go with that, or continuing what we see today where we see them trying to rezone with our current zoning districts.
So I know, I know you're not there yet, but I count where you could buy down fifty-seven percent of your open space. So, so is that meant to happen?
Fifty-seven. I do believe the way it was counted was it should be that regardless of, even if they meet all the incentives, there should be a ten percent open space floor that will never be able to be taken away, that basically we have. The way the incentive program was designed is you have your fifty percent open space initial requirement, but if you hit all the incentives at the max level, you'd be able to lower it to, to just ten percent required open space. And if the math did not match that.
So we're trying to say, we're, we're foster, we're theoretically with zoning changes going to foster open space out in the county, but close to town, we're willing to throw it, nix it. We don't need any open space because.
Not nix it completely, but definitely in terms of lowering it in, in exchange for certain environment, guarantees that, at least from a staff perspective, provide the environmental guarantees that would justify the lack of open space. And I can.
Mr. Chairman, I think that, you know, I think that.
Let him go, want to let him go through this first. So what he's, what he's saying, Sam?
Oh, no worries, no worries.
Well, I did, it started, but the other night, that's how it started.
I know.
You just ran on and on, then it was time to go home.
Yeah.
And I can't keep straight. We don't go point by point.
And we'll try to get to a cert, and we'll try to get to a cert, we'll try to get to a certain point and then just, you know, get our questions gathered, because it's obvious that Harrison knows what he's talking about and we're trying, that's right. We are trying to pick out the.
I do apologize for going a little bit fast. I just know that since there's other stuff on the agenda and stuff.
I didn't even hear Lance say anything, so, you know, so, but, but in a way, and we understand that, you know, you know this, and, and we are trying to learn more about it, you know, also in the process. So what we'll do is try to wait to get to a certain point.
Chairman, I'm just going to make, make one little comment. This isn't the first time you all have seen this.
We, we know that.
We, we looked at it sixty days ago.
Right.
There have been very few changes.
Yeah.
So I'm just reminding, you know, it's a two-way street, so just keep.
Well, and it wasn't a negative, that, that wasn't anything intended to.
Oh, yeah, no, no. I understand. I talk fast.
And it's good that you know what you, what you're talking about, and, and we could have called and asked you some questions, you know, on this also, but, but in the meantime, if you just.
Yeah, I can slow it down.
Yeah, yeah, maybe go about forty instead of sixty.
Definitely, definitely. I do apologize to, I do apologize to the commission about that.
Okay.
What can I say? When I start nerding out, I get a little excited about it. But before I continue on, is there anything I have already covered that you guys would like me to go over again, since I kind of rushed through it very fast at first?
Look, you said something earlier, and that was about the Commonwealth's.
Affordable housing?
Expectations of affordable housing.
So.
And that's the first time, you know, I didn't see and understand that.
From our understanding as staff, that basically if, say, for example, we want one of our incentives to be actually, you know, like housing set aside for affordability reasons, like what you see in other localities, we would have to use a structure prescribed by the state, which has a whole, they say, oh, if you want to offer affordable housing, you have to give them these density bonuses. And that's just because we are under the Dillon Rule system, and I'm not sure how that law came about. There's only a few localities that can create their whole entirely own affordable housing scheme, and that's like Arlington, Alexandria, I think maybe Charlottesville. So the reason I brought that up is we found, staff found a way to incentivize different housing types that could be more affordable to the average Culpeper resident or Culpeper worker.
Right.
Without potentially tripping up with Virginia State Code. Because with Virginia State Code, not only would we have to follow, based on staff's interpretation, reaching out to state-level staff, not only would we have to go by their incentive program, but we'd also have to have a separate affordable housing statement that would have to go through the planning commission, the board supervisors, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
And right now, the county's not considering that. We haven't been given any direction to, to go down that path, so that's why you don't see that here.
Okay. Yeah, because, you know, every time a developer come and, you know, we're asking about affordable housing, and answers we get, so when you, it's good to know that part, that there's some guidelines of.
This ordinance could provide the flexibility where someone could do a different type of unit that could be more affordable than others in that sense, but it's not going to address what the state may define as an affordable housing unit or attainable unit, so.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, I think there's different regulations for affordable housing, you know. So, you know, just reading what Fairfax does, I think you, you're talking about what the definition is, low to moderate income, earning sixty percent of the area median income or below, as indicated by U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development based on the 2021 study, which is basically sixty percent for a family of four, Fairfax County is seventy-seven thousand dollars. So basically, we're saying a family of four would make it seventy-seven thousand dollars, and the definition meant that they have to be able to provide adequate housing to have enough money left over to provide the basic needs like food, clothing, Medicare, ideally housing expenses should not exceed thirty percent of your income. And that number defined what the house prices would be, that dictated where they would go. And so that, if you want to really get to affordable housing, you're going to have to really dial it back, but it depends on what everybody wants to do.
It's, it's a hard balance when it comes to affordable housing. You know, it, it really is, you know, and if the commission would want to, to take that initiative up, we certainly could.
Yeah.
You know, because every community's a little bit differently. Obviously, their AMI is going to be, the average median income's going to be different. But at the same time, you do see some localities use affordable housing or attainable housing, workforce housing, there's many terms for it, to incentivize density, though.
That seems like that would be a good idea, because instead of giving, oh, we got to have a solar panel, or we're going to have electric charging stations, why not do it as an incentive if you put some affordable housing, but put a threshold number that the sale price of the unit must be, or the financing of it must be, and do it from that angle, and that would, to me, would be a better incentive program or more useful for the general public than that.
And staff would say that is, that is also a more preferable program, but based on staff's interpretation of how state code is written, we would have to follow exactly what they prescribe as their incentive program, which is basically if, and I'm trying to remember this off the top of my head, that basically if a developer provides X amount of affordability as a certain percentage, we have to grant them X amount of density bonus. So basically, the state is prescribing how we do it. And there's only a few localities that have that exception that allows them to be much more niche in how they.
And look, I, I just threw us off in that direction, and like what Sam said, that, you know, another time we could maybe, you know, dab into that one day, but you go ahead and let's go with.
No worries, Mr. Chairman. I do the same thing in my conversations as well.
All right, thanks, Sam.
Yeah, but before I move on, is there anything else that I have already covered that the commission would like me to go over, since I went a little fast at first? Yes, sir.
Where we can come back to a minute's eight. I want to understand how many parcels are ever, ever left now that are ten?
I think we definitely touched on that when we had our A-one RA discussion. I know that. I sadly don't have those numbers with me on this PowerPoint, but in the A-one RA PowerPoint, I do know we have that slide somewhere, at least in regards to the A-one RA districts.
What was the specific question?
Yeah, specific question is, I'd like, you know, we're talking about reducing it to ten acres, so I wanted to know how many parcels do we actually have that are ten acres, or let's say ten to twenty is an example.
In the projected growth areas?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can definitely get you that information. I do remember from the last meeting, there was talk about the twenty acres potentially being too high. I don't remember specifically how that conversation came about, but, excuse me, that's why we kind of lowered it to ten.
Yeah, I don't remember that twenty was too high, because we have to have the open space portion of this. So I think that it needs to be a little bit higher than ten, because by the time you put the open space in the parking, et cetera, on that, there isn't much left for the actual footprint of the units. So it seems to me as though we should look at the twenty acres like it was, and I don't remember us saying we should lower it.
Yes, and I, yeah, and I was not saying that the commission directed us to lower to ten, I just remember there was some conversation going on. There was nothing wrong with twenty. We just, since there was some anecdotal talkings about that, staff just want, just felt like try, try and go that way, but we can easily raise it back up to twenty or higher or somewhere in between. Anything else before moving on?
I think, I think in some cases where I've seen it go smaller acreage is when you change the building height. Because in urban areas like Arlington, Alexandria, things like that, they do it on smaller parcels, but they increase the building height, so they change the PUD, if you would, for varying size properties.
Definitely, definitely.
Yeah, and right now, the, the current max height matches what our current PUD is now and matches what the R-four height limit is, which is forty-five feet. So there is no projected, or at least drafted change to that right now, so, yeah.
Awesome, but moving right along, so some just highlights from the current PUD code. Obviously, as we've discussed, the smaller district minimum, the much higher minimum open space requirements, more flexible standards for development as previously discussed with the lot minimums and lot widths, the encouragement of various types of residential development, which we will touch in a moment, additional expectations regarding connectivity, which we'll touch towards the end of this presentation, and then reworked incentives for high-quality developments, which we are going to go into in a moment. This is also just a comparison between the revised PUD ordinance, our R-four district, which is our most intensive residential district, and the CS district, which is our most intense commercial district. So just to compare all three in regards to use, the R-four is obviously just residential only, the PUD is supposed to, is trying to be a bit of a catch-all for residential, commercial, and office slash miscellaneous uses, and then the CS is primary commercial with residential allowed as well, but we are also going to be discussing that later tonight, so question marks about all that. Moving on, the R-four and the CS are more lot-specific, so it's more like building a specific building or specific, like very small development, while the revised PUD is more for the area master-planned development on a much larger scale. Moving along to the development rights, so the R-four, it's twelve, in the revised PUD, it's twelve, but there's an incentive to raise it to sixteen, which I will cover later on in this presentation. And then in the CS, the max is, I do believe, R-three, which is eight dwelling units per acre. Moving right along to lot coverage, as you can tell, the lot coverage for residential in the revised PUD matches our R-four, and for our non-residential and mixed use, it matches our commercial services, which is sixty. There is an incentive to increase the lot coverage maximum for residential if they meet a certain incentive, which again will be covered later on. Finally, in regards to open space requirements, in the R-four, there's a common open space requirement of one thousand two hundred square feet per dwelling unit, and the CS, there is really no separate open space requirement, there's just the lot coverage maximum of sixty percent. And then the revised PUD, we're proposing a minimum of fifty percent locked in open space, whether in, whether common or preserved, and by common, we were talking about, you know, say, just to pull an example, the Armstrong development with the trails, the parks, et cetera, or completely preserved, no disturb at all, unless certain incentives are met. So I know I've been talking about these incentives, so let's get right on into talking about them. So we have three types of incentives. We have incentives to reduce overall open space, the overall open space minimum, incentive, there's an incentive for additional, additional density and lot coverage, and then, and then, excuse me, there's an incentive to reduce parking minimums. So first off, for the open space minimum reduction, so as I've been saying before, high open space minimum to incentivize the use of incentives, and these incentives are focused on the, reducing the ecological impact of the development, which then justifies shrinking how much open space they need to preserve. The way these incentives are structured is that the developers can pick and choose which incentives, and depending on the incentive, the intensity, they want to follow through with it. I just want to say, and this is regarding a comment I do believe a commissioner made at the last moment about how do we quantify some of the open space with the parks and whatnot. moment about how do we quantify some of the open space with the parks and whatnot, with this new reworked incentive structure, we did not address the kind of open space provided in regards to amenities, because we, staff feels as though this, that's something that a lot of these master planned developments already propose at the forefront. We've seen this with Stonehaven, we see this with Armstrong, just as examples of they're already proffering, you know, trails, parks, other amenities. So we figured that trying to create a checklist as something that's already being provided might be a little bit redundant. So moving on to these incentives, our first one is vegetarian riparian buffers, basically providing a open space and a minimum reduction for if they provide fifty-foot buffers, or a hundred foot, a hundred-foot buffers. The idea is that if a development is saying that they will preserve all the natural water spaces, sorry, that is a little glitch on my end. Sorry. That if they provide that buffering along those natural existing water features, that could do, that could really assist with catching runoff and nutrient pollution into our waterways, a lot of which are currently impaired, thus justifying reducing the general open space required. So for example, if they provide a hundred-foot buffers on opens, on existing water lays, like say there's an, there's an intermittent stream, or say there's like a little bit of a tributary to one of our major rivers there, and they say they're going to give a hundred-foot buffers along all that, then they can reduce the open space minimum by four percent. The reason why we have NA on there is there's going to be a chance that there will be some parcels that won't have any natural, open, natural waterways on there, so we didn't want to penalize any prospective developments that aren't going to have waterways to protect in the first place.
So are those, the footage, like the fifty feet and the hundred feet, is that on top of what would already be required? So let's say it's already required that there's a thirty-five foot, does that mean that it becomes a hundred and thirty-five feet to get the?
I think this would be, this would not run, I think the word would be concurrently with those buffers. And I do believe, when, let me just scroll back here to some of those maps real quick, is, so for example...
Armstrong.
Along, say, like, again, just to use them as an example, is the Armstrong piece, I don't think it would be this plus an extra fifty or a hundred. It would be, that would be counted within that. We can obviously easily make it so it's like an additional, whatever is not already in floodplain as well, if that is something the commission thinks would be much more beneficial. But I don't think it was originally designed as such, but we can easily change it, so it does do that.
Yeah, I think we need to watch this incentive on something like that. We're trying to preserve some green space, and now we're going to allow them to have more density, which is more runoff. So I, I'm not for giving them an incentive to reduce the green space.
That is definitely understandable. The ideas behind some of these incentives were that it will guarantee maybe some environmental open space aspects that might be above and beyond what they would normally provide, thus justifying that reduction. But if the commission thinks some of these things might not necessarily, they're not proportional to the amount of ecological impact reduction, if that makes sense, we can definitely tweak some of the numbers or different incentives.
Yeah, but if you're trying to, to use some ecological protection of a stream, it doesn't seem like we should allow everything to get closer to it. Seems like we should leave it.
Oh, we are not, the way with the riparian buffers is that we're not allowing them to get closer to them. We're saying that they give us buffers that might go above and beyond what they would normally allow.
Right.
That then they could maybe have a little bit of extra development, since that increased buffers would probably do more than what would normally happen under a regular development. But moving...
If I could just say on that, since Cindy brought it up, too much, too many incentives may be excessive. If, if they can go all the way down to ten percent left open space, I mean, that's, that's almost none left. You might give them the opportunity to go from fifty to twenty-five percent, which still leaves you a decent amount of open space left. But yeah, you, too, too many incentives, you just, you just give away the open space.
Oh, yeah, definitely. We can definitely rework the numbers on that. Yeah, this is just, this is just a prototype draft. This is more of a work session. It's not...
Okay, good.
It's not like required, the board is looking for like a passage of this and getting out the next board session. So we can definitely tweak the numbers and make it all work out better. But moving right along...
Harrison?
Yes, sir.
Question. I'm confused. We're talking about now taking the open space down to ten percent. I'm looking at a thing here, it says, creating an incentive structure to reduce the amount of required open space by twenty percent in exchange for higher quality developments. So my understanding is you can only reduce by twenty percent, not down to ten percent.
That is an older version. There is, this, this was...
I stand corrected.
Yeah, we have to put dates on the bottom of these things, too.
Yes, I'll make sure I can date them in the next time they're updated, yes.
Okay.
But yeah, that was orig, that was the older version. This newer version allows it to go down to ten. But that's assuming they hit every single incentive, and they go for the max level with every incentive. But definitely, I can understand the concern about that being too low, and we can definitely re, configure the numbers as well.
Okay.
But moving right along, another thing is nutrient credits. This is something that we see a lot at the site plan. So for sizable developments, the Commonwealth of Virginia requires them to meet seventy-five percent of their controlling, managing their runoff on-site, and then usually they can buy credits to offset the, the rest. And what we're trying to say is, okay, if they provide BMPs that reduce it to where they only use ten percent, where they only cover ten percent through nutrient credits, or no nutrient credits are used in the development at all, and it's all contained within site and treated on-site, then providing an open space minimum reduction for that.
Yeah, if we're going to preserve the ecology portion of it, why do we want to give them nutrient credits? There's no nutrient credit, then they can have the amount of open space reduced, because there's no space left for, I mean, ten acres or twenty acres. There's not much space.
Oh, sorry.
I think, I think what this is saying is basically, you could, an applicant could come back based on the EQ of purchased nutrient credits for their development, and not provide any, anything on-site.
Right.
Related to it.
Well, with this...
So they have the right to purchase nutrient credits if they meet the criteria of these deep...
Yes.
Instead of doing that, if they, instead of buying nutrient credits, which would be better for that, you know, that environment, is actually provide the facility on-site, and if you did that, as opposed to just buying credit, which they're allowed to, then you're going to give them extra credit.
Yes. That is, because then that will guarantee that, you know, trying to contain as little of that runoff into our own water systems. And this would not be saying that they, this wouldn't be preventing them from using nutrient credits, just as they want that extra open space reduction, they can, you know, try to contain it all, or at least ninety percent on-site. Yes. Moving right along, and again, I know the numbers are seeming a little bit high. Again, we're going to rejig, we're going to rejig all the numbers and kind of work it based off of the discussion, so just wanted to point that out real quick. The EV charging, basically providing an open space incentive regarding the provision of EV chargers. So specifically, having a one level where basically if they, for every residential development, so whether that be a house or an apartment complex, having one space or twenty percent of all spaces rounded up, whichever one is more, to be EV-ready for a level two or higher electric vehicle charger. And this actually doesn't, this just makes it easier for people who want to have EVs to install in their house, because usually this is ma, basically making sure that you have an installed electrical panel capacity and raceway, with conduit determinate in a junction box of two hundred and forty volt charging outlets, typical clothing dryer outlet. Thus, then, if they want to, you know, they can still, they, they would still have to buy their own EV charger to install it, but it's just making sure that there is that capacity for if they want to, because a lot of ways that, you know, houses are still developed, or developments are still developed, they don't really accommodate that, thus having a huge, a higher price barrier. And I know since there's a little issues of, the concerns about why is that kind of relevant to us as a county, I just kind of want to point out, you know, that throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia, there is more and more adoptions of EV charging throughout the Commonwealth. This is also a bit of a national priority as well, with funds to incentivize EV charging's infrastructure, to either meet climate goals, or to meet, you know, market demand and whatnot. And our thoughts as staff was not only to make sure we don't fall behind in regards to market forces, but also in regards to environmental aspects, because, you know, with EVs, you have less, you know, tailpipe emissions aspect. But as we can see on this map, you know, we're basically surrounded by localities that have much higher quantity of EV charging, and what we as staff think we might want to avoid is becoming like a, basically a little hole, where if assuming market forces create a scenario where there's a lot more EVs on the road, that people just kind of skip over Culpeper, because there's nowhere to charge them.
All right, I have comments.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I am not for, as a taxpayer, paying the current EV incentive on the federal level of seventy-five hundred dollars, or forty-five hundred dollars if you buy a new or used EV. And that will change, most likely, with every change in administration. So to give a developer the incentive to put the structure in adds to the cost, and this affordable housing component now is just putting another two thousand dollars on that house. And they may say it's two thousand cost, but then they turn around and tell, as a retail price, it's three thousand. So I don't think they should be given any reduction of open space, any incentive. If you want to put it in there, okay, but no incentive to do it. And if you're on a ten-acre track, or even a twenty-acre track, and you start reducing ten percent open space, that's one to two acres, you know. So I'm not for incentivizing putting an EV rough in at every house. That is adding to the cost of the house, so no. You want to have it in a parking area somewhere, and if you're going to live in a duplex, how are you charging anything from the duplex, or the apartment? You know, a single-family detached home is one thing. And the parking requirements are kind of bicycle-driven. I guess you could charge your electric bicycle, too, but put it in a contained area if you're going to do that. But I don't think you should add to the cost of a house by giving this as an incentive. It's not.
That is definitely a fair point. I will say in regards to, say, the duplexes and other residential developments that may have shared parking, or not like the traditional garage and stuff, that's why we say twenty percent of all spaces rounded up, because this is looking at the total off-street parking. So then, you know, obviously for the single-family home, the, you know, the one space, but we try to make sure we had that whole twenty percent of all spaces rounded up, to account for some of those more communal parking arrangements. But definitely, we can, as staff, we can look into making, changing up the incentives or removing this incentive...
Right.
To make it more feasible and a little less cost prohibitive.
Or put it as a requirement somewhere else on-site.
Okay, yeah.
And maybe it's not a requirement, because you're still going to add to the cost of these houses. But I'm not for using that as an incentive. I think it's very political right now.
I agree with Commissioner Thornhill. You know, to me, if you want to have an electric vehicle, that's a personal choice. And obviously, that's something that you financially need to be prepared for, is putting that in your own house, or townhouse, or whatever. That's not something that we need to incentivize builders to do so. I mean, that's, you know, it's kind of, if you want to, like I said, your, your choice in buying a vehicle, whether you want something new or used. I mean, it's, it's a luxury, not a necessity.
And that has to be approved, or discussed with the electric company.
Yeah.
You know, also, because they got to be able to reserve, you know, whatever, if they got to, you know, five homes, or whatever, they got to make sure that they can actually address that. It's a whole lot more.
Yes, sir. Definitely. Yeah, we can definitely...
Mr. Chairman, did you want to take a consensus point on whether this should remain as incentive at all?
We can. We can. Yes.
I might be...
From, from a standpoint of the EV charging, do we, what is our...
You can have it, but not as an incentive. The developer should not be given an incentive to do it.
And I'd say the same thing about the seventy-five percent of solar-ready homes. That's a big cost.
That is, that's not included in this new version.
And how about the, if you park underneath a bunch of solar panels, how is parking underneath the solar panels attractive? That is...
But look, we got, we got this, and we'll move. When, when it comes to the EV charging, what's our pleasure there, so?
No, it's...
Awesome.
All in favor? No incentive? Okay.
Purge that.
Harrison, I would say if you... That was ten percent of Mr. Price's going from ten percent to twenty-five percent, so we need to find about five more, you know.
That's exactly what I was going to say, ma'am.
All right.
That buys us some time.
You're good. You're getting there.
All right. Perfect.
Okay, moving on.
We're getting two birds with one stone.
Moving on.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We'll definitely be removing that.
Are we getting, beginning to really understand you now? We got it.
Yeah, we got it.
We got it.
EV, do we have EVs out at the airport?
I do not believe so.
Not currently. We are...
A lot of airports like...
The airport, the airport committee is looking into those things.
Because they're having electric planes.
Yeah, the airport committee is looking into those things, though, so.
Yeah.
Awesome. Well, moving right along, another one of the incentives is for incorporating a visual connection to public transportation networks, specifically, you know, the trolley service. And we've seen this already with the Williams Mill development, right along Knolls Mill, how they already proffered a bus stop, whatever, et cetera, not whatever. And then going along also with bicycle and pedestrian connections, as well as to the town. We did not quantify those, because there's already a VDOT standard for those aspects. So obviously, if they're going to try, try to bring in some of that into their development, they're going to be following VDOT standard, which are already, you know, at acceptable levels.
But shouldn't they have to do that? I think we should make it so they have to have a bus stop, or if it's...
We can definitely make that more of a requirement than an incentive.
I would, in the same way with the bike path, if we want to have connectivity to the town.
Well, I think we just found our other five percent for Commissioner Price.
Yeah. Are we back to, are we, are we back to affecting the affordable house?
Well...
When we do that, we're going to require them to...
The bus stop should be zero, right?
Should be?
Well, the bus, I think, will come. They're going to Williams Mill. I don't think they're adding anything.
Not yet. We don't have the bus routes go into Williams Mill. That would be...
Right.
We just were able to get the express shuttle, but I will say, we just had PTB, Public Transportation Board meeting, just recently, and ridership continues to go up, so I don't think the trolley system's going to go anywhere, and it's definitely, if anything, it's going to be increasing.
All right.
What are the current requirements for acquiring bus stops?
And there is, there is certainly a cost element to, you know...
To the taxpayer, though, not to the developer.
No, there's, there's a cost element to those. And, and the development, you know, in my opinion, should have to, you know, pay for those. Just keep in mind, this is just a different construct of an ordinance. So instead of having a cookie cutter ordinance that says exactly what you have to do, we're just presiding in different paths or opportunities for a development to do that. So if the planning commission doesn't think that's the wise thing to do, that's okay. We just thought that was one particular path. If you think a more stick approach ordinance is needed, meaning that you have to do this, this, and this, we can do that. It's just, I've found that a hybrid ordinance, where there's a little bit of a carrot approach and a stick approach, I think is probably going to work best for our environment right now. But that's, that's totally up to the...
And provide the flexibility.
Yeah. I think so. I think it's better.
We agree. Okay. We, okay there?
So moving along to parking structures, this was actually brought up by board members as something they wanted to see staff try to find a way to incentivize by having, trying to incentivize parking structures instead of parking lots. Obviously, one of the more environmental factors of that is you're just using less ground cover space, you're kind of going vertically, so you're saving some open space from being just, you know, asphalt islands. So what we have is that, you know, if a developer provides at least twenty-five percent of the code required off-street parking spaces located in a parking structure, they get that reduced minimum parking space. And we just showed some visualizations of what that could look like. The bottom one might be a familiar example, that's right by our train station right here in downtown Culpeper. So it's, so it definitely is even feasible with either like single-lot developments or very small projects. And then finally, I know, I have a feeling this one might be contentious. I'm already, I already got the pen raid, exit if desired.
Hex.
Well, then we get an extra six percent already.
Well, I would just say, though, on days like we've had recently, covered parking like that might be an advantage.
I would say the reason why we looked at the solar canopies was not, was not only for, you know, the aspects of, you know, pairing that with the EV stuff, which we have just purged, in terms of electrical generation, and trying to steer more towards distributed solar energy and away from the big utility scale stuff that we see, that we see, like the state and Dominion try to push, that, as Commissioner Price just said, they do actually have a benefit of trying to lower the heat island effect, which we see in massive, you know, paved areas and built-up areas. Obviously, that's more of an issue in, you know, big urban areas, but even here in Culpeper, we do have issues of heat island effect, and this provides extra benefit of, you know, maybe you don't get into your car that's baking out a hundred and twelve degrees on a sunny day.
Yeah, but, I mean, most good would be done there with more of your commercial uses, the Walmart parking lot, the whatever plaza over there with TJ Maxx. Like, I don't, to me, this doesn't make sense when we're talking about a housing development.
Like a little Reston.
Well, this is...
You don't see that in Reston?
But this is mixed use.
This is for... This is for.
It could be partially commercial.
This is for all off-street required parking, so this includes the residential, the commercial, the office space. So this is saying that this could be for any, any configuration, they do it, just as long as twenty-five percent of the amount of spaces that we require are covered by this, they get that incentive. So that's, that's not saying that every single house has to be covered by this or every single.
No, but in that calculation, though, you're going to, every single family house, you're taking that into consideration.
That will be part of that calculation, yes.
So potentially, they would have to do it on a single family house, potentially.
Theoretically, yes, but I feel like the developer would be able to find a way so that that wouldn't be the case, because I feel like that would be a very tough sell on their end when they try to market the house. But again, also, we can, as we said with all the other stuff, we can change up the numbers, so maybe it's not twenty-five percent of the code required off-street parking, or we can make it so it's only the required off-street parking for mixed use and non-residential structures, so that it doesn't affect, you know, single family dwellings and whatnot to alleviate those concerns if that's something the commission is interested in.
Maybe just mixed use is good.
Awesome, yeah, I can definitely make that change. And if we're.
And maybe the size of it isn't so large. I don't know if there's.
Oh, you're talking about the dimensions of the actual canopies themselves?
The actual, the roof and the panel and the, the look of it is not attractive. If you're going to have the kind of environment and the quality that you're talking about, which I can visualize, I don't visualize that mixed in with it.
Definitely, yeah, yeah, definitely. We can definitely look into that in redoing some of this stuff, yeah, definitely.
Have we come up with six percent? Just.
Not five.
That was basically the reason we were six percent, is we were just, with the whole target idea of the max being ten percent minimum always being required, that's just how the math worked out, if they were taking the maximum incentive for every single step.
Okay, so my OCD is going to say make it five, not six.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, definitely, definitely, that was, definitely, we can do that, especially since we're already changing up some of the previous stuff, we can definitely make that math work and make it all, much more simply like fives and zeros or twos and fours.
Well, I mean, the larger percentage to a developer is, well, it's telling them where you are placing the importance. So this is one of the single heavier weighted things, so I think that's one of the things we need, there's that one that's ten on the buffers.
Yeah, and that's going to change, yeah. The nutrient credits, yes.
Yeah. But I'm saying, I think that's something that needs to look at as well, is where do we want that emphasis placed?
Definitely, definitely. We were trying to do a mixture of the emphasis and also what staff thought would be, you know, maybe harder for a developer to do without that initial incentive as well. So we're trying to, try to do a multiple different factors in there, not just where we think the most important things were, but also in terms of how much they, we think that they might need as an incentive in order to consider doing that in the first place. But we can definitely, again, we're going to be changing up all these numbers to better reflect what the commission is looking for.
So let me ask a question. So we're, we're going to put solar canopies and maybe mixed use space. So the developer makes, builds a facility that's got, designed for mixed use, so maybe it's a store or something, right? And he's going to build a canopy. Okay? Now, when somebody moves into that store, who's responsible for that canopy?
We figure that in a lot of these commercial spaces, you usually have an owner tenant that rents it out to different businesses, so it most likely would be whoever's going to be the owner of that commercial district, which is, I do believe, would be the commercial developer.
Usually would be some type of property owners association.
Yeah.
If it's a homeowner association, it'd be an HOA, but in a commercial, typically, you do have shared space, but it's not an HOA, it'd just be a POA, it'd be some type of property owners association.
Okay. So when the developer sells the space to this user, he'll include the cost of this.
Yeah. It'd be, it'd be kind of like a shared, shared resource, like a stormwater facility would be. You know, there, there are shared stormwater ponds all over the place, and there are POAs, you know, property owners association, that, it'd be, I see it as a similar feature to that. It'd seem like the parking in general, because a lot of the parking is going to be shared in these situations.
And what they do is they'll have to triple that rent, or then they're going to pay for parking, taxes, and insurance that the developer or the owner has. So it'll go into the cost of the rent. It gets passed down to whoever's using the commercial space.
And I will say.
Who fixes it when it breaks?
The landlord.
The landlord.
The owner, the developer, right, the developer, because you've paid into a pool of money that he's.
Okay, to develop.
Correct. Or if it's not, if it's sold, that PUD is sold.
PUD is sold, then whoever owns it at the time, if he's collecting from everybody for common area maintenance, then he will be responsible.
Like an HOA?
Yeah, it is like an HOA.
Yeah.
Okay, sir.
Yeah, but moving right along, that's all that, those incentives were for the open space stuff. And again, numbers, as we've established, they're all temporary, they can all be rechanged if you don't like the percentages or the, in this case, the dwelling unit and max lot coverage. But in regards to the different types of housing units that we're trying to incentivize, we thought that, you know, if the incentive was, say, twenty percent, five percent of all the dwelling units were in, you know, duplexes, cottage courts, multifamily, or mixed use configurations, they get that density bonus of sixteen instead of the original twelve, and the lot coverage can then be a maximum of fifty instead of thirty-five. Again, we can change those numbers to what the commission thinks it is much more suitable if those numbers seem a little bit extreme or not in the right balance of things. But this is basically our way of trying to get that more attainable housing without, you know, accidentally tripping on Virginia State Code and having Virginia saying, no, you didn't do it our way, you have to do it our way and go through this whole process, and then end up with just developments that are just, as we've currently seen in some other massive developments, homes or townhomes that are like, you know, six hundred thousand or more, that the average Culpeper resident might not be able to afford. So this goes, so this is just quick little visuals of just, you know, duplex, cottage courts, multifamily, not like apartment towers or anything crazy like that. Or again, as we have in Culpeper, the nice live-work mixed use space. And then the final little incentive is just a little parking incentive, that if they do that whole connecting the public transit and the bicycle pedestrian connections, they can have a reduction in the required parking for non-residential categories. But we can get, get rid of this, since we're talking about now requiring this kind of multimodal connections instead of having it as an incentive, so.
Okay.
And then finally, just some circulation and connectivity stuff, we kind of spell it out in the PUD, kind of like what we're expecting in regards to how they do design their inner circulation, which obviously the public transportation aspects can fit into here, so that'll be an easy change. But obviously, you talk about street designs that promote connectivity and support other multimodal transportations, talking about, you know, shared use pa, shared use paths, bike lanes, stuff like that, trying to connect to the town if it's feasible. So as I showed you earlier, the whole area off of Irahoff and Extended is right next to the town, so that is a more feasible option than, say, the Armstrong property where there's a railroad track that's kind of dividing Gulf, so trying to provide some of that leeway. Talking about preference more towards roundabouts, over signalized or signed intersections, trying to encourage interconnectivity within these developments instead of just multiple dead ends, et cetera. But more or less, that is the, the PUD stuff. Obviously, we don't need to have any rulings on this stuff, because this is still kind of the work session phase. And definitely, you've given staff a lot to work on and to reconfigure. Before I go back down and we go to the residential and commercial stuff, is there anything else the commission would like to say?
Yeah, I had, I guess one question was about the parking structure.
Yes.
So if I, if I, if I'm going to do, let's say, fifty units, and let's just say the requirement for parking was a hundred, a hundred parking spaces, right? If I do it in my driveway, or if I do it in an onsite parking, onsite parking lot or parking garage, it's still the same amount of, I'm not reducing the amount of parking that I'm required. So if I do do a parking structure, what is the county getting out of it? Because a lot of times, when you do that, you know, the ROI for the developer starts to get off when you require public parking as part of the parking garage. So what typically I've seen when you do parking structures is, we would ask, if it's in town, that part of that parking structure is considered public parking. That way, it gets a benefit to the county. And that would warrant an incentive to have that reduction.
We can definitely add.
Because now you're getting something different than what you would get with onsite parking.
That is actually a very good point, and we can definitely add that into that incentive. And I know that ties back into discussions we had with the Armstrong about some of that overflow parking, so we can definitely work that in there, yes.
So is it private streets? It can all be private inside the body of that?
Theoretically, yes, but obviously, one, they can still do public, and then, two, with the whole entire PUD ordinance, they're going to have to apply for rezoning for it, so it's going to have to go through, you know, staff analysis, the analysis by you, the commission, and ultimately the board supervisors as well. And one idea from staff is why some of these things were a little bit more nebulous, is if we try to do a checklist of every single little thing, it'll end up being, it could potentially, you know, create some loopholes or create such rigidity that it might not be used in the first place. And that could be stuff that could be discussed more at the planning commission level or the board supervisors level.
Because it's such a small space.
Mm-hmm.
I would think you would just have, it would all be private. I wouldn't see this public road.
I would imagine, I would imagine a lot of the PUDs that we would see in the areas where we're projecting some growth, I think you're right, I think a lot of it would be private.
Yeah, because there's.
It allows more flexibility for the developer, because VDOT, while they've gotten more flexible with street design in recent years, it's still not that flexible.
Right.
So, you know, when you're talking about.
And it costs more.
You know, traffic calming measures and orange street parking, VDOT has a model, but not a lot of developers want to choose that model, especially if you're looking at a mixed use development.
Right.
It's hard to work with, so.
Awesome. Is there anything else before I yield to Sam?
I have a couple of comments.
Yes, sir.
One's on some exact language in, oh, the statement of intent, number six.
Yes, sir.
In the presentation, at the first couple pages, you mentioned chapter four, preserving historic sites. Why are we marking out which preserves historic, or enhances specific historic sites and buildings? It's like we crossed that out.
That could have been, there's two things for that, either, one, that could have been just an accidental backspace error while going through the document. The other aspect is, I think, that in these areas that we're looking for the PUD, there aren't identified historic resources in these areas, so it seemed as redundant as well. But we can easily just add that back in.
Well, see, I'm still thinking, as we're talking about a ten acre tool, I'm still thinking that two hundred, four hundred, five hundred acre tool is still out there. And am I wrong? You can still apply for a PUD anywhere, I think, anywhere in the county, as long as you have a water source and you can put up a package treatment plan.
Theoretically, yes. The idea is that, you know, in the staff recommendation phase, we would most, we'd more or less say that is not, is not aligned with the comprehensive plan, because we're designing this specifically for future growth areas. And then also, the ability for the commission and/or the board supervisors to shoot that down if and when it got to those stages.
Okay, that said, I, I see throughout the beginning here, the application of procedures and development standards, we're talking about, we discourage, we're using those soft words about, but like, for instance, if we go back over here to the use regulations in R4.
Yes, sir.
Five C two dash one point one, we're pretty clear. We say it's got to have approved public water and sewer of adequate capacity. So that, are we going to draw down on this area of where, are we going to clarify the, or do you all think the language is, is tight enough about future growth area or adjacent to the service district? I mean, I still think we're going to have unexpected consequences if people show up, they apply for still very large projects elsewhere, especially in our other areas. If, I was looking at the, the water and sewer.
At Brandy.
At Brandy. Well, you got Brandy, and I know some of them aren't going to be built anymore, but you got Mitchells, Brandy, Clavengers. What's to say that, that we just don't turn the switch on some of those guys and be like, say I'm at Cherry Hill and I've got five lots, and I'm like, golly, these houses are old, I'm going to knock them all down and do a PUD here. And I can plug it in, I want you to fix Cherry Hill, I'll pay you to fix Cherry Hill to make it work. I'm just dreaming stuff up.
I know, that's.
Why couldn't you do that? I mean.
That is a very valid.
Unexpected, unexpected locations for unlike uses.
That is definitely an understandable concern. I think the way we approached it as staff initially was that we still use that soft language in returns of keeping in the future growth area and that, you know, obviously most likely a staff recommendation would be a denial. And then that same interpretation would be carried up through the planning commission and the board supervisors. But if it is the will of the commission to, you know, make that language much more stricter, so it's just only within the identified future growth areas as talked about in the comprehensive plan, we, we can go down that more stricter path as well.
Well, I don't think we need to, the comprehensive plan is becoming a bible. It's supposed to be a guideline, so I don't really want to make it more restrictive to the comprehensive plan. I don't want that. It's, it's going there now. But I, I know that they have asked at the Amazon facility to have sewer and water from Brandy in, in the airpark. And as it comes down, you know, the newspaper's telling you how we're going to preserve septic systems out there or help people with problems. But there's an, that's an area right through there. There's a bunch of open, bigger farmland that could be requested of us to approve because they're going to have sewer and water now. So that's not in future land growth right now.
That is not.
That's not.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to address one thing. That, that was for the Warranton Train Center that you saw, not the Amazon facility.
I'm sorry, well, they're, they're renting in there now, whatever.
It's close, but it's, it's.
Correct, but they rent that space from Warranton Trainer.
Yeah.
And that's why, they requested more development of that space, and it's not in our future land use. So if we're planning, all this planning that we do.
Yeah, it is just a guy.
Is pointing out, that's coming.
Sure.
So my question is. It's a, it's a good guy, but to answer, Mr. Chairman, to answer to, to follow along with what Commissioner Burton's asking.
Yes.
Does the commission, or does Commissioner Burton feel like there needs to be more checks or balances in this ordinance moving forward to, because I, I agree and understand your concern.
My brain hasn't gotten that far.
Okay.
But I'm just thinking, I hear anecdotal tales of like, oh, well, they built the sewer line down by me and.
Right.
You know, it came right through me, so I, you know, I got, I got four taps.
Yeah.
And so if, if, even though it's not in a service district, I don't think, for instance, as an example of mine, I'm saying, could you end up with townhouses and apartments, duplexes in, in a very rural area that you didn't expect?
To answer the question, I think theoretically, yes, you could. I mean, the board ultimately has that zoning tool and power.
Right.
And they, they can do that. You hope that they use the comprehensive plan as a guide, as Commissioner Thornhill pointed out. But you do want to have an ordinance that backs that up. So that's why I was asking that question.